Alicia, ¿puedes escucharme en los salones?
Sí, podemos. Gracias.
Va a llamar.
Carol, también. ¿Felicidad o negocio? ¿Sabes? ¿Felicidad o negocio?
Parece que alguien más está inscrito.
Lo sé. Lo siento escuchándolo, pero no lo veo.
En el fondo también. Está bien. Solo no muestra que alguien está encendido. Jeff está encendido, pero no muestra que está encendido. Solo muestra el pódio. No, no.
Bienvenidos, todos. Se reunieron aquí para una reunión de la ciudadanía regularmente programada en un domingo por la noche, el segundo y cuarto de lunes del mes. Perdón, solo no estoy cerca de hacerlo. Gracias. ¿Es mejor eso? Muy bien. Bien. Bienvenidos a nuestra reunión de la ciudadanía regularmente programada. El día de hoy es el 27 de octubre de 2025, las 5:30 p.m. Estamos en la sala de la ciudadanía. Llamo a la reunión a orden. Para aquellos que pueden, por favor, unenseñarnos con el aplauso. Y antes de que hagamos el llamado de ronda, sé que Carol se unirá a nosotros. La hemos enviado fuera de estado a una conferencia y dos de los consulars están fuera de la ciudad. Sé que uno, Kell, puede estar tarde porque está en un viaje de negocios a México y va a Trato, como entiendo. Con eso dicho, llamemos la ronda.
Fonseca.
Sí.
Kell.
Sí.
Lottie Hough.
Sí.
Mitchell.
Sí.
Nichols.
Sí.
Schneider.
Sí.
Thompson.
Sí.
Muy bien. Tenemos corán. Ahora es hora de comentario público y tengo que leer esto una vez por vez. Los miembros del público pueden hacer comentarios sobre cualquier item que no estuviera en la agenda durante este tiempo. El orador se acercará al micrófono y dirá su nombre, si o su nombre y dirección. Los comentarios serán limitados a tres minutos, si más o menos es autorizado por el jefe. Los oradores deben hacer comentarios directos al jefe y a la ciudadanía en su conjunto. Y el jefe y la ciudadanía pueden proporcionar una respuesta al comentario público, pero no se involucrarán en la discusión o debate sobre los temas raised por los miembros del público. No se puede tomar acción sobre los temas raised en los comentarios públicos en orden de que compliquemos las leyes de las reuniones abiertas. Con eso dicho, ahora es cuando normalmente intento preguntarle al consular y empezar a hablar, pero en lugar de eso recordaré decir que el micrófono está abierto. ¿Alguien quiere hablar?
Tim Bradbury, 12 Norte, 10ª Avenida. Verificé a personas más jóvenes entrando al hospital durante el fin de semana y llamé al policía de no emergencia en caso de que quisieran saberlo. Pero viendo, y me di cuenta y miré donde estaba la sección de flores, puertas y basura y ventanas rotas y miré. Parecía que cada vez que pasaba había más ventanas rotas rotas en las escaleras y ventanas siendo empujadas hacia afuera, que la gente debe estar quedando ahí. Pero me di cuenta que tiene que ser un trabajo duro para el fuerza policial y incluso tener la fuerza de mano para ver si hay algún problema. Quién podemos ver sobre poner al menos un parque o algo para barricatar algo así, porque quién sabe qué tipo de problema de drogas o cualquier otro problema ocurre, que podríamos, ya sabes, ser un problema de seguridad o lo que sea. Solo me pregunto cómo podríamos abordarlo o si alguien podía.
Espero que esto no sea considerado debate. Puedo decirte que la propiedad no es propiedad de la ciudad. Realmente no tenemos mucho control sobre ella. Y el 4 de noviembre, el alquiler de la policía ha sido programado para determinar quién puede poseerla y quién será responsable de ella. ¿Alguien más quiere hablar? ¿Alguien de aquí? Bueno, primero Carol, si estás, ¿te gustaría decir algo esta noche?
No tengo nada, su señor.
Bien, gracias. ¿Y algún otro consular quiere hablar?
Su señor, por favor.
Por favor.
Sí, me gustaría agradecerle a Mr. Hoagland por la oportunidad de, tipo, job shadowearle esta tarde, ir por su lado. Realmente interesante trabajo que hace y lo que tiene que ponerse. Gracias.
Señor jefe, ¿me vas a dejar hablar esta noche de lo que hablamos en Hy-Vee?
Sé que estás fuera de orden. Pero estoy dispuesto a tomar la oportunidad.
No recuerdas.
Sí, recuerdo.
All right. ¿Por lo que prefieres que yo lo lleve a hablar esta noche?
Oh, no me importa. La gente me ha estado bromeando durante semanas.
No, solo quiero decir, alguien me envió ese carril de baile que hizo el jefe. Y Kyle Martin no puede cantar para salvar su vida, pero Kyle Martin hizo que el jefe se vea bien. Tiene una voz de cantante buena. Estuve sorprendido de manera agradable. Así que pensé que esta noche nos divertiría. Le dije que iba a hacer esto. Eso es por lo que estaba preguntando si iba a llamarme esta noche, porque me dijo que no iba a llamarme. Pero pensé que podía cantar algunas partes o algo para nosotros esta noche, ya sabes, aliviar el humor un poco. Mr. Hoagland siempre dice que necesitamos aliviar el humor aquí, así que...
Oh, era justo en primer lugar. Estabas realmente fuera de orden.
Si eso es una moción, lo seguiremos.
Y estás fuera de orden también. Tengo que admitir, fue divertido. Realmente es en el carril de baile, así que la cosa está pasando y así no puedes oírte muy bien. Son buenos lo suficientemente que publican las letras en el asiento trasero para que puedas leerlas, así que, ya sabes, no tienes que cantar con la boca. Y Ann de la universidad hizo la siguiente semana después de eso y, eh, ella fue realmente buena y divertida, así que están buscando...
Entiendo que Alicia es siguiente.
Bueno, no sé, si te piden que lo haga, es, es tipo divertido. Están teniendo diversión con él, así que gracias, sí. No, eso no va a pasar. Había un candidato que entró a la ciudad y le preguntaron a alguien en la audiencia para comenzar con la nota para cantar "America the Beautiful", y esperé cinco segundos enteros antes de que alguien lo hiciera. Y pensé, está bien. Así que me encontré sentado y comencé con una nota. Era demasiado alto. Nadie podía cantar. Era como intentar el pleno de allegiance, pero, de todos modos, vamos a seguir con las cosas más importantes. ¿Alguien más aquí?
Su señor, por favor.
Oh, Dios mío, sí.
¿Por qué no? I wear hearing aids, so I've heard enough bad music. Solo quiero mencionar que este viernes próximo es el último día para la Casa Haunted House para Remix Dance Academy. Son un beneficio no lucro. Están tratando de raise dinero para ayudar a su academia de danza desde las 7 a las 9 de la noche el viernes. Tienen un buen tiempo haciéndolo también. No sabía que las niñas pequeñas podrían ser tan malas, pero son. Así que espero que todos vengan para el último día el viernes. Gracias.
¿Alguien más? Realmente no tengo ningún comentario, excepto que recibí muchos llamados, mensajes, correos electrónicos y cosas así durante semanas antes de que tengamos los niños que salgan a hacer el truco. Y solo para que puedas recordar, años atrás, pensé que era como tres años, cuatro años atrás, pensé que era estúpido que el jefe fuera el único que tuvo que decidir cuál noche, porque, ya sabes, estoy acostumbrado a tomar decisiones y defender a la mitad de la gente o más. Pero le di una a la ciudad porque no tenía muchos niños que estaban haciendo trucos. Y la decisión fue tomada para hacerlo el sábado antes. Así que muchas de las personas que tienen hijos pueden, si trabajan durante la semana, está disponible en una noche de fin de semana en lugar de eso. Y tampoco conflictó tanto con el truco que ha estado sucediendo y se ha convertido en parte de una tradición aquí, así que... Creo que esto probablemente continuará, pero solo quiero que sepas que no culpo a estos tipos, no a mí, por esa decisión desde ahora. Pero como entiendo, fue una noche con bastante clima y los niños se fueron. Quería que hubiéramos venido a casa en lugar de ver Iowa State fallar en la segunda mitad de ese juego allí. Bien, a los años de servicio. No veo a nadie aquí para presentar a Anna Vaughan, pero ella ha estado con nuestro departamento policial ahora por cinco años, así que es su aniversario. Me gustaría mencionar eso. A la agenda de consentimiento, si alguien quiere moverse para su aprobación.
¿Me mueven?
Sí.
Llamamos.
Mitchell.
Sí.
Nichols.
Sí.
Schneider.
Sí.
Thompson.
Sí.
Fonseca. Sí. Kell.
Sí.
Lottie Hough.
Sí.
Muy bien. Está cargado y esos ítems pueden encontrarse online y están en la agenda que está imprimida. A los informes, solo uno de ellos esta noche, es el update de la Task Force Inoces.
Letra G. Miembros de la ciudadanía, mi nombre es Kendra Sorensen y sirvigo como director ejecutivo para la March of Town Air United Way y también co-chair para la Task Force Inoces. United Way se honra en actuar como sponsor fiscal para la Task Force y quiero agradecerte por la oportunidad de compartir un breve update. Primero, me gustaría reconocer a mis colegas co-chairs, Jasmine Banderas con capas, Tiffany Beatle y Susie Reed, sentadas aquí a mi lado con el equipo de impacto YSS. Rachel Norton de March of Town Air United Way también proporciona apoyo ejecutivo para nuestra Task Force. Y nuestros oficiales son Mike Lottie Hough, algunos de ustedes pueden conocerlo, Shelley Harvey y juntos somos apoyados por un grupo muy diverso de más de 30 miembros activos de la comunidad que están profundamente comprometidos con la addressing de la vivienda y la estabilidad en nuestra comunidad. Desde enero hasta mediocenturista, los números que voy a darte, la Task Force ha tenido 50 inmersiones para la prevención o intervención de la inobligación. De esas 32 personas y familias han sido asistidas a la ayuda de alquileres, depósitos de alquileres, o estadías de hotel temporales. Con la ayuda de alquileres siendo la número uno. Importante, nuestro foco ha sido en la prevención, ayudando a la gente a permanecer alojada antes de perder la vivienda, un enfoque proactivo, más reactiva. Es a través de la generosidad de nuestra comunidad, incluidas organizaciones de fe, 100 mujeres que se preocupan, empresas locales y donantes individuales, hemos recibido un total de 32,718 dólares en contribuciones y han distribuido 19,589 dólares de asistencia directa a los en necesidad. La gestión de casos para las personas y familias está proporcionada por varios socios locales, CAPS, YSS, Salvation Army, MICA, Mid-Iowa Triumph Recovery Center y Access, dependiendo de las circunstancias específicas de cada caso. En cuanto a la demografía de los que han servido, 36 mujeres, 13 hombres, uno descripto. 38 son entre los edades de 28 a 35 años. 28 son de edades de 36 a 45. 16% son de 56 a 65. 10% son de 16 a 25. 10% are 16 to 25 and 8% are 46 to 55. Ethnicity, 66% are white, 14% black, 12% Hispanic, 4% multicultural, 2% makes up Indian, American Indian, Alaskan Native and Native Hawaiian Pacific Islander. So as you can see, we are serving a broad group of individuals here in our community. The reasons people experience homelessness or housing instability are complex, ranging from job loss, unexpected expenses like medical bills or car repairs, loss of disability or SSI benefits, or potentially fleeing domestic abuse. Among those that are unhoused that we have had intake forms on, six have reported living outdoors, three in their cars, and five staying temporarily with friends or family while seeking stable housing. The freeze and HUD has added another layer of difficulty and in some cases, our task force has stepped in as a supplemental support system to help bridge those gaps. The Homelessness Task Force is entirely volunteer-led and we continue to work collaboratively to connect individuals and families with the resources and case management they need to overcome their barriers. As we approach the winter months, our priority is identifying a location that could serve as a warming center. We have a few options and are actively working towards securing a solution. I want to thank you guys again for your time and your continued support to our efforts to ensure everyone in Marshalltown has access to safe and stable housing and will take any questions that you may have.
Kendra?
Yes, sir.
Can you explain to people what might disqualify you from receiving funding?
Yeah, absolutely. That's a great question. Not everybody that we do intakes on do receive assistance. Number one, they have to want the assistance. They have to be willing to want to be case managed and work to overcome whatever barriers that they are facing. Unfortunately, the truth of the matter is, is some people do want that help and truly walk through the process of how did, how did they get to the situation that they're in and want to resolve that, and others do not. And we do see that, you know, from time to time. But they do have to want the assistance.
I think.
Does that answer your question?
Yeah. When we talk about being case managed, it means that you have a plan going forward.
Correct. They have to adhere to meeting, meetings and guidelines and not simply, again, it's, it's a hand up, okay? Not a, not a handout.
But you have to, okay, where are you going to get next month's money? What are you going to do? Are you going to be working? How is this, you know, there, it gets very complicated very quickly. But we have had some people that just, well, they just want the money for a month and then they're going to be homeless the next month.
Correct.
And that, that doesn't help.
And in some of those situations, I mean, it has been identified that maybe they are living, you know, they could be in a place that they could make ends meet a little bit better. So there has been, maybe they are in a current place that they are renting and because of, we do see a lot of medical situations that have occurred or expensive automobile repairs that have set them back. And sometimes it's just, they are literally living paycheck to paycheck. So honestly, when something like that happens, it completely spins them around. So some of it has been finding different housing for those that are not living just paycheck by paycheck.
Your Honor, if I may. Kendra, you said rent assistance is the number one payout that you guys have done?
Correct.
So are they getting evicted or are they coming to you proactively and that you can keep them in their apartment? What's, what's happening with that?
Right. They are, for the most part, some of them are coming to us proactively, right? A lot of them have already received an eviction notice. So we, I mean, we do our best to try to avoid them being evicted and then that goes on their record. And then later on landlords may not want to rent to them or they've got to pay an extra deposit. So it just creates additional barriers. And that's the thing that I, I guess I'm most proud of, is that we continue to work proactively versus reactively. So if we can intercede before they become homeless and that's helping provide some rent assistance, maybe just to get them over a hump, right? They lost a job, they're waiting on SSI or disability benefits, it provides that little supplemental boost.
So where are the proactive referrals coming from? Is that Sue and Suzie and Tiff?
Yes.
Through Impact or is it through churches or what?
So.
How do people know that they can come to you for help?
Sure, absolutely. So there are some people that are referred to us by local faith-based organizations, but a lot of it does come as a phone call into United Way, which then we ask a lot of different questions to make sure that they are fit with the right agency that is going to have the expertise to help them. So then that comes from the agencies that I had referenced. So if it's an impact advocate, then that is either Tiffany or Suzie working with them. If it's, it's a family, it's, it's CAPS that are working with them or possibly MICA. So it just depends very specifically on, on the situation and the individual and their needs.
So do you feel, these percentages you gave us, the numbers, do you feel you're reaching everybody right now or is there still an unknown quantity out there in Marshalltown?
I think there's always going to be a little bit of an unknown quantity, right? Again, it's those that are seeking assistance and those that have not yet. Mayor Joel Greer knows of a situation not too long ago. And what Joel doesn't know is I had received an email from a charter school counselor and it was a mom with a child and didn't, I just knew about the one that was going through charter, charter school. And they had been living in a tent and were getting very fearful of the cooler temperatures coming. So this counselor had reached out to me, gave me just a little bit of information, hardly, not very much. So I followed up with a lot of other questions to best, you know, point them to the right resources. And then at the same time, it was probably like a day or two later, this mother had also reached out, had Googled who the mayor of Marshalltown was, reached out to Joel and was asking for any type of help whatsoever. Joel then forwarded that email on, copying me. They are currently being case managed by CAPS. I can tell you that they are in, they are, they have been put in housing right now and so those, that is just one of our many success stories. Obviously, you know, it can go either way, you know, as far as if somebody wants the help, but the mother was actively searching for help and, and reached out. So they come to us in all different avenues.
They were in the tent and the frost warnings were coming that night.
Yes. Yeah.
So I emailed her back, well, emailed you.
I think I got the email from you after 9:00 PM at some point.
And within 24 hours.
Yes.
CAPS was involved, you were involved.
Yes.
And I got the nicest email back from the mom.
Yeah, yep, yeah. So we're doing the best we can, just trying to serve those that we can.
I really appreciate it.
Yeah, absolutely. I don't know, Suzie, is there anything that you want to add?
I am here for moral support. I know I love the speaking part of it, so.
I mean, honestly, the huge kudos goes out to the teams at the local agencies that are providing that case management and walking alongside these individuals, you know, that's the most important part.
Very good. Well, I'd just like, we don't ask for public comment on this sort of thing very often. Let me, on behalf of the public, comment on how much we appreciate what your task force has done and you stood up and volunteered in the first place when we did this and it's only going to become more important. Des Moines just made it illegal to be in tents and, and you can get fined for living that way in Des Moines. Every city I know is facing this and as of November 1, when some of the benefits are cut off, it's just going to get more important.
Correct. Yeah, absolutely. Well, we'll keep you posted. We're still searching for a little bit of a solution there, so, thank you.
Okay, on to motions.
Motion to approve a Class E retail alcohol license for Omega Saber at 1701 Iowa Avenue East. It's a change in ownership from Yes Way.
Move for approval.
I'll second that, Your Honor.
Any discussion?
Yes, Your Honor. Then ownership change will occur on November 12 at this location. We've previously approved their tobacco license change.
And no reaction from the police department that it would be a problem. Okay, very good. I doubt the public has any comment on this one. If I'm wrong, raise a hand. Let's vote.
Kel?
David, I saw that hand go up, but I know you were just waving to somebody going out. Yeah, just didn't mean to call you out.
Kel?
Unmute, maybe? Maybe not there yet.
I think we were having some problems with the go-to and Heather might be trying to fix it.
Let's go on to the next.
Lottie Hough?
Yes.
Mitchell?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Schneider?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Fonseca?
Yes.
Kel?
Yes.
Carried, thank you. Our next one?
Motion to approve a Class C retail alcohol license with outdoor service for Last Ride Barbecue at 2013 South Center Street.
Motion first. Move for approval, Your Honor? Thank you, Sarah Zaka.
Second.
Thank you. Discussion?
Yes, Your Honor. This license will be for the, whatever anybody knows it as, Calvin Rocket for Garrett Goodman at 2013 South Center Street. He does not have an opening date yet.
Good sign that they're asking for the permit. Any comment up here or out there? Let's roll call this one.
Schneider?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Fonseca?
Yes.
Kel?
Yes.
Lottie Hough?
Yes.
Mitchell?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Carried as well. Our third one?
Motion to approve a Class B retail alcohol license for Brew Number 91 at 111 South Third Avenue. This is a change in ownership from Jiffy.
Move for approval, Your Honor?
Second.
Discussion?
Yes, on this one, the ownership change will be occurring on November 3 and they have applied for a tobacco permit change also.
The next item, eh? Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Lottie Hough?
Yes.
Mitchell?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Schneider?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Fonseca?
Yes.
Kel?
Yes.
Carried, then last one.
Motion to approve a retail tobacco permit for Brew Number 91 at 111 South Third Avenue. Change of ownership from Jiffy.
Move for approval, Your Honor?
Second.
Roll call.
Fonseca?
Yes.
Kel?
Yes.
Lottie Hough?
Yes.
Mitchell?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Schneider?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Carried. Under resolutions, one able, our first one?
Resolution approving the purchase of 208 Leo Street from Argenetics, Inc., DBA Mycogen Seeds for $25,000.
Move for approval, Your Honor? Thank you.
Second.
Very good. Discussion?
Deb Milliser, Housing and Community Development Director. What we're discussing tonight is the purchase of, or the possible purchase of 208 Leo Street for $25,000. You're considering this, it's 1.4 acres, to secure a reliable year-round access to the levee and emergency pump station that is located behind Carl Chevrolet. This item was previously discussed with the council in the fall of 2024. I believe Heather visited with you at that time about that. When council, in 2024, council authorized negotiation of up to $25,000 per acre. The proposed $25,000 total purchase is well below that cap that would have been 36.5 for 1.46 acres. Owning the parcel ends our reliance on informal access that can fail in wet conditions or during high water events, reducing operational and emergency response risk. As I mentioned earlier, the purchasing price is $25,000 and the city covers the closing cost to the seller, which, so that the seller nets the full amount of that $25,000. The condition of the purchase is as-is, so if there's any cleanup that's needed down there, the city would need to do that. I was down there just a couple of weeks ago and there wasn't anything down there that needed to be cleaned up. The owner had cleaned that up previously. The benefits of owning this property would guarantee the levee, access to the levee maintenance and emergency pump operations, lower risks during floods and storm events, and the cost aligns with local utility operations for land values, which is within the prior city council direction. Purchasing this would support infrastructure and asset management because it would provide reliable access for the levee and stormwater systems and public safety and resilience, faster, safer flood response and pump operations. Staff is asking council, excuse me, staff is asking council to approve the purchase and sale agreement for 208 Leo Street for $25,000 and authorize execution of documents and complete due diligence, excuse me, due diligence and the closing of the purchase. Do you have any questions of me or I, I'm here to answer any questions?
Don't see anybody up here asking any questions. Anybody in the public have any questions about this one? No. Roll call, please.
Mitchell?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Schneider?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Fonseca?
Yes.
Kel?
Yes.
Lottie Hough?
Yes.
Carried. Next one, one able?
Resolution adopting the 2026 to 2028 City Council Goal Setting Report.
Move for approval.
Seven.
Discussion on this one?
Your Honor, if I may? I just have a question for, I guess for Carol, if she's still on.
Yeah, I'm here.
If we adopt this, are we adopting it specifically as in the timetable or are we adopting everything in it and we will move forward expeditiously on everything?
Well, I would say that there are some of the goals that are listed in other years that we're beginning now. So is that your question, whether or not we would wait for year two or three to do some of the things council identified?
That's exactly my question, because there's, there's a handful of things that we need to get started on yesterday. So I just want to make sure that by adopting this, we're not having you put some of these on the back burner.
No, I'll, this is, I said, I would say essentially a living document. There'll be more dialogue with the council about how we approach each one, but as I was going through the list, there are many that are listed in future years that we've already started.
I was trying to be nice by saying a handful, so thank you. Thank you, Your Honor.
Welcome. Anyone else? Any public comment on this one? We had a pretty good turnout at the event. Okay. Okay, sure.
2005 Lincoln Tower Circle, LL1. Is this document available for public viewing?
Yes, it's on the city's website.
City's website, all right. Thank you very much.
Yeah, yeah.
And actually, Your Honor, may I? And Sue, it's one of the attachments. You can pull it up.
Yes.
On your computer tonight.
Anybody else? Well, let's call the roll.
Nichols?
Yes.
Schneider?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Fonseca?
Yes.
Kel?
Yes.
Lottie Hough?
Yes.
Mitchell?
Yes.
Very good. That carried. One able, let's go on to the next one.
Resolution approving the pre-design agreement for the 2026 P024 with Iowa DOT for the Highway 14 3R Northern Section, project number ST. number STR two five zero zero four.
Move for approval?
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion on this one?
Good evening. Heather Thomas, Public Works Director. I'm going to give a little bit of background on this project. This is a project that's made a lot of comments and news recently with the desire to have something done on Highway fourteen here in town. So a little history, prior to the tornado, the city had commissioned a Highway fourteen North Corridor Study, and that was adopted by council in May of twenty eighteen. During that time, there was some ideas presented in that study. That study is available on our website still today, and part of that took another level, and the city applied for a larger project where we looked at not only what was on the surface, but also underground and some of the utilities that were aging underneath that street. And that's what led to the city applying for what is now called a RACE grant. That is a national grant that we applied for and was not successful on. But that project was a twenty-eight million dollar project. So after some unsuccessfulness in that grant application, in twenty twenty-three, we came back to city council saying, hey, we haven't had luck on this. Are we okay setting this larger project aside and at least getting some work done? And that was a yes that we were given. So we went back to Iowa DOT and said, hey, let's, let's go ahead and proceed with what was called a three R project, which would be similar to what happened on the south side of Marshalltown on Highway fourteen corridor. So as we did that, Iowa DOT then puts it in their programming for years, looks at different priorities that they have and when they may be able to get it in their schedule. And this past year was when that concept work started and the city staff met with Iowa DOT. And one of the things we inquired with Iowa DOT is, from that Highway fourteen North Corridor Study, the concept of a four to three lane conversion came up. And so we asked for DOT's input on whether or not that would be a good idea to combine with this resurfacing project. So with that, I would like to introduce Ben with Iowa DOT and have him touch upon a little bit of that concept work. So soon as my mouse works, I'm going to open presentation.
Thanks, Heather. As Heather said, I'm Ben Aty with the District One Office of the Iowa DOT. I'm just here to talk about our three R resurfacing project here on Highway fourteen. Going to start with the DOT overview, just to give everybody an idea of how we work and how we're organized, talk about the specific resurfacing project, and then more in detail about that four to three lane conversion. So the state of Iowa is divided up into the six districts, each covering roughly one-sixth of the state. I work in the District One Office, which is centered out of Ames, and we cover the twelve counties of central Iowa. In our District One Office, we have, obviously, the District Office of Ames. We have three construction offices, one in Jefferson, one in Grimes, and then one here in Marshalltown. And then we have sixteen different maintenance garages that are located roughly one per county, then with a couple extra in the Des Moines Metro, just to cover our extra lane miles there. There's roughly fifteen engineers in the district office. I'm just one of those fifteen, so a lot of support staff that we have here to, to support our operations and maintenance. Specifically here, then moving into Marshalltown in this resurfacing project, as Heather said, this is kind of the, coming out of, following up to that resurfacing project we did basically from US thirty up to Anson Street here probably five or six years ago, basically taking off from there, working on Anson Street from, from Center to Third, and then north up all the way to Riverside Drive. As a part of that project, we'd just be overlaying the new, the existing road with three inches of new asphalt. We'd plan to do that in the, in the summer of twenty twenty-seven for roughly two point one million dollars. As a part of that resurfacing project, the department would upgrade all of the ADA crossings. So think east-west or the crossings that cross Highway fourteen, the department would bring those up to current ADA standards. So these are just details that show what we're going to do. We're not changing curb lines. We're not changing medians. It's solely to address the pavement condition. What's out there is basically beyond its life. We just need to bring it up and refresh it with a new asphalt overlay. So going back to this overview map, as Heather said, as we started discussions between the department and the city of Marshalltown, the idea of a four to three lane came up. So basically, what we would look at from the department's point of view is doing a four to three lane conversion on Third Street specifically. So think just the north-south stretch. Anson Street, we looked at, but with the raised medians that are already there, that provides a safety benefit, and we don't really want to get into, to changing it from five lanes to three. It's more just in the four to three area on that north-to-south stretch. So what are the benefits, or what is a four to three lane conversion? So it's basically changing the, the two lanes in each direction to a single lane in each direction, and then providing a center, two-way left turn lane down the middle. As I mentioned, the existing curb line's not changing, so that extra space is just going to be striped out. You know, if we pursue this, it'd be striped out as a, you know, basically extra space beyond the, beyond the white line. The benefit of doing this is it decreases left turn crossing and rear end crashes. Easy to say, but what does it really mean? These are mid-block intersection and street crossing crash diagrams or conflict point diagrams that show just how many conflict points exist, and think of conflict points as where two vehicle movements intersect at an intersection. You know, your crossing movements can intersect, left turn movements can intersect. How do we reduce those number of conflict points? And the four to three lane reduces those. So one thing that we looked at after we were asked about a four to three lane conversion is we look at our crash data. So from twenty twenty to twenty twenty-four, which is five years of crash data, that's what the department pulls when we look. We have a hundred and seventy-nine crashes basically from Anson Street to Riverside Drive on Highway fourteen, with four suspected serious injury, fifteen minor, thirty possible, and a hundred and thirty property damage only. That's a lot of crashes. Then we break it out into what types of crashes, and you can see over there on the right, there's a chart that breaks those out into broadsides, rear ends, side swipes, angle, non-collision, think, you know, just hitting a fixed object or something like that. Head-on, where somebody maybe is trying to make a left turn, doesn't quite make it, and, you know, chooses a bad gap, and then side swipes, and then some rear to sides. So what we look at, when we look at the department, is what's correctable by a four to three lane conversion. Those are all boxed in red there, which are eighty-seven percent of the hundred and seventy-nine crashes. So I'm not saying we would reduce the crash rate by eighty-seven percent, but what I am saying is eighty-seven percent of all the crashes that happen on that stretch of Highway fourteen fall into a correctable category where a four to three lane would possibly eliminate that crash from happening. So looking deeper into this, this is just a diagram that shows how the four to three lane can correct these crashes. So these broadside right angle crashes, you know, if somebody's pulling off the side street, when there's two lanes of traffic, the traffic in the outside lane can, can shadow a traffic that's in the left lane. By reducing it to just a single lane, there's one line of cars that the, the vehicle has to look at to, to pick the correct gap to make that left turn out. Rear end crashes are twenty-two percent. So somebody in the left through lane slows down to make a turn into either a driveway or a side street, the person behind them doesn't see them and just runs into the back of them. There's side swipes. The person, this is the difference here is the person behind sees the car in front of them, slow down, moves to make an evasive maneuver, pulls out or tries to switch lanes quickly, and doesn't see the person, you know, off in their blind spot, and basically runs into them, causing a side swipe crash. Oncoming left turns is twelve percent, which is somebody making a left turn out of a through lane. The opposing traffic is blocking their view of that second car, and they just choose to, choose a bad gap to make a left turn in. So by reducing those two lanes to a single lane, it, it allows for better sight lines and, and choosing the right gap to make that left turn. The department has done these around the state, and when we do these types of projects, you know, four to three lane conversions, we keep track of the data before and after. So what we do is we look at the five years before and, and typically keep a running crash count afterwards to see how well did these perform based on the amount of traffic. So here's just a, a list of cities that we've done these in, from Centerville, Fairfield, Oskaloosa, Atlantic, Washington, and then Perry. We've done some more that are more recent than this, like think Tama Toledo on Highway sixty-three. Those are just too new to actually have an accurate crash data poll from those. But what we look at here is we look at our, our traffic volumes. They're all, you know, some of them are, are smaller than, or have less traffic than the city of Marshalltown, but all representative. And all of those crash reductions on those previous four to three lanes average about fifty-six percent reduction in crashes. So we see a huge benefit here, you know, just by changing the, the striping on the road. We can reduce the number of crashes that occur on the road. So with that, I want to open it up to questions. I know I kind of went through a little fast, but...
Any questions up here?
Your Honor, if I may?
Sure.
Can you explain the type of resurfacing preparation that goes into a project like this?
Yes. So with this, I'm going to, sorry, I'm going to flip back to this, this picture here. It shows basically, we have an existing, most of the Highway fourteen existing is PC. We're just going to add three inches of new asphalt over the top of it. So we'd put basically a bonding agent down first, one inch and a half lift of what we call intermediate asphalt, and then we put another inch and a half of what we call surface asphalt on the top of it. With this roadway being curb and gutter, we don't want to fill in the curb and gutter with asphalt. So what we're going to do, shown there on either edge of the roadway, is basically mill or scarify down that three inches, so that when we do our new three inches of overlay, that it ties into the existing curb and gutter, so that we maintain storm sewer and drainage as it is today.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Is there council comments or questions?
Your Honor, and what's the life expectancy of that, of the asphalt, that plan?
So that it's typically about fifteen to twenty years. That's about what we see out of our asphalt overlays. It really honestly just depends on what's underneath of it.
Okay, sounds good. And so, looking at the, so right now, we have four lanes on there, right? And so moving to three, what's going to happen with that excess?
So that just gets striped out on the outside. So typically, a four-lane roadway is forty-eight feet, four lanes of, or four twelve-foot lanes for that forty-eight feet. And then when we do the conversion, the center lane is fourteen feet, then we have two twelve-foot through lanes, and then it's roughly six feet on either side that is just striped out as basically excess pavement.
Okay. And, and would there be any, I don't know if we have talked, you know, thought about this, but like the bike lanes or anything like that?
So that gets brought up a lot when the DOT starts talking about these four to three lanes, is doing bike lanes on the outside. By keeping it as just striped out excess space, the maintenance responsibilities of that pavement does not change. The department owns and manages what they did before, and the city does too. When you stripe it out as bike lanes, the long-term maintenance actually switches to be city-maintained for that bike lane instead of department-managed. So that is just one of the, the things I want to be aware of, whenever we bring up bike lanes as, as a part of these conversions.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Your Honor, hey, Ben, nice job, by the way.
Thanks.
Two questions. Are you guys looking at speed limit changes on this section?
Not, not at the moment.
And then, obviously, the road's going to stay open while you guys are doing this, but what's, from start to, when you guys show up and start stripping asphalt until you guys leave our town, what's your timeframe in twenty-seven?
So it'd probably be about a three-month project is what I would estimate this as being. And like you said, it'd be open, one lane in each direction at all times. We don't need to close it. We're just putting new asphalt down. You can drive on it as soon as it's cool. But it, I would estimate just about three months, just, just for contractor workflow and, and stuff like that.
So what town are you guys doing next year that we can just swap with them?
I, I don't know who is, who's in on the, the list for next year, but a lot of times what happens is, we, we plan our projects about three to five years in advance, just so that we can have these conversations with cities as these projects come along, just in case there's work that the city wants to do and partner with the department on.
Your Honor, this is probably a question for Heather, but is there any crossing storm sewer or whatever we should replace before they do this overlay, so we don't have to redo that right afterwards?
I have several items after we're done with Ben that I'm going to go through with our potential add-ons for the city to do as part of this work, and storm sewer is one of those I'll discuss.
Your Honor, if I may. Ben, that, right on the north side of the Third Avenue Viaduct, there are some areas that have really fallen in. Will those be dug up and relayed?
Yes. So as a part of an overlay project, what we do, actually do is we, we go through and we put a patch tab together. So those are areas where maybe the underlying pavement is worse and can't handle an overlay, or would cause an overlay to fail significantly earlier than we'd like it. So we work with our construction office to identify those areas first, patch them, and then do the overlay.
Thank you. I've got two things. One, did you work with Wayne Sunday? He was an old classmate of mine in, in your office in Ames.
I think he's retired, but I-
He's retired by now. Yeah, he's seventy, seventy-three years old, like I'm facing, but that was, he would have been the one doing this years ago. Good guy. And then the other thing is, up in Okoboji, I grew up in Okoboji in the summertime, and it was a big fight about whether they should go four lane to three lane through a pretty high-traffic area around Arnold's Park. They, there was a lot of resistance to it. They did it anyway. They love it, and it is safer now, and the traffic moves better up there. So anecdotally, I've seen, and it was the businesses that were concerned that they would lose business, and instead, people feel safer to make a turn into a business now up there.
Yeah. I guess that's one thing I didn't touch on. Highway fourteen here in Marshalltown has about fourteen thousand vehicles a day, and the department feels comfortable doing these four to three lanes on up to eighteen. Some cities even push that limit a lot higher than the department feels comfortable with.
Thank you for that. I should ask for a public comment if there is any.
Thank you, Your Honor. Representative David Blom from three oh four Wakanda Road here in Marshalltown, Iowa. I just wanted to say thank you for the, the council from the past in twenty eighteen who did the original Highway fourteen corridor study. There's a lot of interesting ideas to read there. I appreciate the energy to get this road taken care of, especially with the, the bad shape that it's gotten into. And when door knocking, I hear a lot of people who are interested in getting this road taken care of. And I'm sure you all hear that comment as well. So I really appreciate the ideas, whether it ends up as four or three lanes, that it's important to get done, and hopefully we can find ways to move the timeframe up even faster. But I appreciate the work that the city staff and council and DOT are doing. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Other public comment on this one before we, yep?
Tim Bradbury, twelve North Tenth Avenue. Just three questions. One is, how would that affect the McDonald's deal? Would that cause more backup and people waiting and going into the intersection, or will that be better for the McDonald turnoff? The other one is, with more residential turnoffs being north of State Street, going towards the park, being, will there be more head-ons of people wanting to turn into the residential and facing each other? And then how will they do the snow removal? Will it be towards the center, or will it be on the side?
I'll take a stab at some of those questions. So for the McDonald's site plan, that's currently a separate item that they're rezoning right now, and we've not done any type of site plan review for that development. But as I was asked about that development early on, that was one of the things we brought up, is that this was likely going to be recommended to a four to three lane conversion, and we've asked them to take their traffic study that they've done and amend that with a new attachment to reflect the change in Highway fourteen's configuration. So I think they are aware that that was a likely potential, and I'm unsure right now if they've been officially given the notice to update their traffic signal or traffic study with that information or not. As far as the residential streets go in this stretch, a lot of the residential streets actually have more rear alley access to some of those residences on this stretch. However, regardless, there will be some potential for some residential's turning left. Those are relatively minimal, and when you look at some of the layouts there, it is, is not uncommon or any higher level than other areas that have a four to three lane. So that, that's not a huge concern. And as far as snow removal goes, a snow removal will be done, as it is today. We're pushing snow outside. It's not going to be in the center by any means. It'll stay open as a three lane. It'll be a little bit easier actually for our snowplows to remove snow. One of the things, when you have that extra width, we still want to clear the snow all the way back to the curb because of the storm intakes. We don't want to pile up and ice up the storm intake. So we still will be clearing the full curb and gutter. You know, likely, the first few passes will be focused on the traveled three lanes and then work to get outside a little bit further to those curbs.
Other public comment or questions?
Lonnie Hogland, fourteen, fourteen oh eight East Main. I think you'll probably get some slice back on switching it from four to three, but I think it could be a great idea. It's just people need to get a learning curve of liking it, and as the mayor said, in other communities, it could be a good thing. My tow trucks have big wide mirrors, and one of my drivers clipped a utility pole right in front of, I'm going to call it Chicano Auto, the old Midwest machine. The utility poles are inches from the streets because my right-hand mirror blasted the side of my truck once. Possible driver error.
And some of us are trying to get used to the rear end, angle parking too. Any other public comment on this one before we call the roll? Any other public comment on this one before we call a roll?
Before we call a vote on this item, I do want to go through just a couple more items that Counselor Nichols mentioned as well. But in addition to the crash data that Ben presented, there's also a couple other positives. With the narrow right-of-way, the ability to expand and move those sidewalks back further from the road, we don't have that ability. So moving the traffic in provides a little bit more separation between pedestrians and traffic. It also helps with the issues of the streetlights and utility poles and sign poles being so close to the curb. I had not heard about that particular incident, but I do know in the last week, we have had another incident where a side mirror has clipped one of those poles along there. So as Alliant Energy has been sending in utility permits for the city to review when they replace street poles and stuff, those are one things we are asking them to push them back. Doing so, it basically puts them in the sidewalk, so there's some times that they're not able to do that. But switching to a four-to-three-lane conversion helps, again, get some of those sides of vehicles closer, further away from those poles. And then, also, one of the other notices is, some of those intake structures along Highway 14 are the grate style. So you're driving on the grate with your traveled wheels right now. Because of the utilities in Highway 14, they weren't able to have a box behind the curb. They had to be under the curb. And so, getting, again, that four-to-three-lane conversion gets people a little bit further and not driving on those storm intakes, which will make for a more smoother ride for those people. So those were just some additional positives. I want to let you know that the actual item on the agenda tonight is approving the pre-design agreement with DOT. Basically, it's saying, yes, we approve the concept. Both the city and Iowa DOT is recommending a four-to-three-lane conversion. Iowa DOT does the design for the resurfacing portion of that in-house, and they use a consultant, and they've selected FOTH Engineering to do some of the sidewalk aspects of that project. With that, the city has some options on the table, just like we did on the South Highway 14 section, where we may be able to do some additional improvements minor with the project, and that hits upon Counselor Nichols. So one thing I wanted to make sure everybody heard is, the DOT is looking at a calendar year 2027 construction. There was some comments made about how we can move that up. My recommendation is not to move it up. And I know that's hard for some of you to hear, but my reason behind that is you also have two items on the agenda tonight related to the Center Street Viaduct, and it is anticipated that the Center Street Viaduct will be closed during the calendar year 2026 for that work. So we would prefer not to have both this project and the Center Street Viaduct under construction at the same time. With this project, initially, we had talked about a one-way to two-way conversion on Church Street and Lynn Street. Initially, when we talked about the four-to-three on this, we thought we were going to need to impact and potentially change out traffic signal poles to make that happen. After talking to DOT, that is no longer something we need to do. They're able to use the existing poles and arms for a four-to-three-lane conversion, so that's not necessary. But initially, that was one of the things we were going to ask if you guys wanted us to undertake concurrently with this project. Again, it's not any, any critical need right now, like we thought it was going to be. So unless there's a burning desire from you guys for us to add that into the project or do that concurrently, I'll move on to the next one. The next intersection that I wanted to talk about is Riverside Intersection. I'm going to pull up a map here. So this is Riverside Street. You will notice to the east is a single lane, or a single roadway, and to the west is a boulevard configuration. It is our recommendation to remove the South Boulevard on the west side. That will make the two intersections line up, and we'll also remove the traffic signal warrants where that traffic signal could go away. Are you guys okay as council with those changes, having us, whether it's with the project or concurrently, timing-wise, remove the South Boulevard and review and confirm the elimination of that traffic signal?
Your Honor, if I may?
You may.
What are you waiting for? Do it today. Barricade it now, and just, there's no reason to keep, to wait on that.
My wife broke her ankle at that intersection, and if you're driving from west to east, it's goofy, and you have to slow down to make that strange turn. This one has always puzzled me why it's like this.
Same here. I've, I've wanted to make a change here, and this is, this is an opportunity to do that. So I will go ahead and say I feel I have consensus from council to proceed in that direction. Along Anson Street from center-
Let me interrupt, though. Mike, you had something you wanted to add?
I believe that's that way because that's the way the trolley ended when it come down. That's why it would loop around and head back the other direction, because I always wondered that myself. Dory Tamman said, "Well, that's where the trolley ended," and dropped off.
I did not know that. That's good information.
There you go. But we don't have trolley anymore.
So you're saying there'll be trolley tracks under, or the streetcar tracks under there?
Yeah.
Okay. Anson Street medians, again, between center and Third Ave. Would you guys like us to do a treatment or replacement of those curbs and gutters and fill in the median similar to what was done on the South Highway 14 project? Please be aware, I'm not asking for plants, or landscaping, or irrigation. I am doing particularly stamped colored concrete like, that was done on the South Highway 14 corridor.
What kind of condition is the curbing?
It's not as bad as the curb that we just redid in front of the Hy-Vee. However, it's not in great condition. You'll notice right now, we went out with a mastic material and tried to patch some of the joints in there. So there's definitely some dings in the existing and some delamination in some of that concrete.
I, I would prefer that you replace them.
Okay.
Your Honor? Heather, can you show us where, where you're talking about?
You bet. So I'm going to zoom out, swing down to south of the tracks. Here we go. All right, so we're talking about, here is Hy-Vee on the screen in the middle, and we're going from Center Street over to Third Ave. So this stretch right here has several raised medians, and we would be looking at spot-replacing curb as necessary, and then looking at replacing the concrete that's in between those curbs.
Okay, and then, Heather, reading, reading your report, I did see something about roundabouts on there. Could you talk to us about that?
You bet. In the Highway 14 study that was approved by council in 2018, one of the projects recommended in that study was a roundabout at Anson Street and Third Ave. I mentioned in my memo that I am not recommending a roundabout at Anson and Third Ave. I won't get into all the details. I didn't go into a huge engineering study on this, but the outcome of that study recommended a 165-foot outside diameter roundabout in this location offset to the northeast of where the intersection is today. And when I looked at the layout there, I would be buying a gas station to make anything happen to work in that area. In addition, my personal opinion is that I would prefer, if we're going to have a roundabout in Marsh Town, we start with a one-lane roundabout and not a two-lane roundabout. So I have not asked DOT to incorporate any roundabout in this project.
I support that.
Sounds good. I was just wondering, I mean, it was on there, so let me just ask on it.
Yeah.
Your Honor, if I may? I just want to echo what Mike said earlier, that it doesn't make sense to replace those medians in curb work after the new asphalt. You know, get that stuff, get, I guess what I'm saying is, your whole laundry list that you're going to read through, now the question is, do you have time in 2026 to get all that stuff done before they start in 2027?
It would be my recommendation to make it part of the project so it was done at the same time. The next item on my list was specific to the intersection of Anson Street and Third Ave. Just as we look at some of the sidewalk in that area, it is really tight on the northwest side. There's not been a layout or design, but there is potential that we may need to look at a small amount of permanent easement or an acquisition to make a compliant sidewalk in the northwest corner of that intersection.
Yes.
This was more of a comment and a request to DOT. I have asked for a painted arc at the intersection of Center Street and Anson, where there's two left-turn lanes at that intersection. Also, as far as pedestrian crossings go, right now, DOT is looking at sidewalks and ADA improvements to the portion of the sidewalk that crosses the highway. There is also a portion of that sidewalk that would cross the side street, and it would be an opportunity now, if the city wanted to add to the project, to look at improving and bringing that accessible at the same time. That would be my recommendation. You know, unfortunately, we're not going to address all of the sidewalks and curbs along Highway 14, but if we can at least look at the intersections and make sure that the crossings are up to speed. One of the changes, especially with traffic signals, is they are going to, traffic signals now that have a countdown pedestrian crossing with an audible sound to it. So that is something that's coming down the line, so I would like your guys' consensus on, first, upgrading those side street crossings, and, second, looking at our, at our traffic signals and the pedestrian countdown timers on those concurrently with this project.
So you have my support for that.
Yeah, this is right by a park and school.
Okay, another, this is more of a tidbit, not necessarily a request on your part. The city conducted a city wayfinding signage for amenities in town. All of those signs are installed, with the exception of the ones that were specified for Highway 14. The ones that were specified as part of that study, and I apologize, I don't remember the year that study was, I know it was more than four years ago because it was before I was here, they did not meet DOT standards, and that's why there's nothing been installed at Highway 14. So not as part of this project, but timing-wise, the city is planning on working with the consultant who conducted that study to get those signs brought into DOT standards and have those installed sometime at the same configuration and timeline as this project. Lastly, storm sewer. In the memo, I've quickly done a list of some of the storm sewer structures and some needs that we're doing. Since we are not doing a massive replacement of the infrastructure, we wanted to at least look at the surface, and while we're in there, address some of those needs. So I'm just asking for your permission to go ahead and work with FOTH Engineering on an engineering agreement between the city and FOTH to address some of those storm sewer needs concurrently with this project.
No objection up here, right?
No objection. Okay.
I feel like that's the last thing on my list. So with that, now I would request a vote, an emotion, or vote regarding the pre-design, unless there's another question.
Your Honor, if I may? So you said something about the DOT can work with the streetlight arms and poles, but if we do Lynn and Church back to two-way, we've got to set at least one new pole, correct, at each intersection on Third Avenue?
At the time that we would do that conversion, yes. We would not need to do that right now.
So there's no infrastructure that we need to dig up across the street or do anything before they do their milling overlay?
I believe we already have poles set on three of the corners, so I will verify with that with FOTH, but I, I think we're okay right now, as long as we plan for the location of where that future mast arm would be if we go to a two-way.
And then, one last question, Your Honor. Thank you for being gracious. Ben, you know we're looking for a professional engineer to hire. Cost, cost of living in Marsh Town is a lot lower than wherever you're living, so just throwing that out there for you.
Thank you for that.
You're, you're out of order, but I didn't mind it this time. Okay, well, let's call a roll.
Cal?
Yes.
Ladihov?
Yes.
Mitchell?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Schneider?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Fonseca?
Yes.
Great. Next resolution?
Resolution approving the Iowa DOT BHM-47976298K64 Center Street Viaduct Rehabilitation Project Number STR21002. That will be let through the Iowa DOT in a tentative letting on January 21st, 2026.
For approval?
I'll second that, Your Honor.
Thank you. Discussion on this one.
Good evening. Heather Thomas, Public Works. Another project that is one that the public has been asking about, the Center Street Viaduct repair. So, again, a little bit of history on this one. Several years ago, we came forward and had some bids on a part of this project. Those bids came in higher, quite a bit higher than the engineer's cost opinion, so we took a pause. We did a temporary repair on the Center Street Viaduct, and we went and applied for and was awarded a $1.5 million grant to help with this project. So with that grant money, came some additional environmental review, some different steps in permitting, and some coordination with Iowa DOT to make that happen, and we have made it through those steps. And so, we have submitted final plans, all of those kind of things, to Iowa DOT to target a letting in January of 2026. The current opinion of probable cost from the engineer is $3,307,378. Because this is a DOT letting and not a local letting, I'm asking for your approval on the project tonight because during the letting process, I will not be able to bring you those bids. So DOT has a guideline that if the bid, the low bid, comes in within 10% of the engineer's opinion of probable cost, they want the city to have already approved the ability to award that. So that's what I'm asking from you guys this evening. As long as the bid does not come in more than 110% of that cost estimate I just read off, we're asking for you to give me approval to enter into contract at that time. As far as project funding goes on this project, I've outlined in my memo the total estimated project costs, so that includes all the engineering permitting, all of UP's stuff, as well as construction. We're just over $4.5 million. We have $4,071,000 of revenue allocated right now to this project, so that did leave a $466,000 shortfall. Again, a lot of that, about $330,000 of that is that 10% contingency that Iowa DOT requires us to carry that. And then, as far as possibilities for funding that shortfall, we have some bond funds that we can apply to this project that's currently in a category "street improvement," and that definitely meets this, as well as we have funds at road use tax that we could apply to this project. So at that time that we award the project, I will bring that back forward to you to understand where we're going to fund any potential shortfall, as well as an engineering agreement for construction phase services from an engineer. And hopefully, that will be in first meeting in February.
Or is open up here?
Your Honor, Heather, do we, are you asking us possible, okay, let me back up. I don't want this to drag on any longer. And are you confident your numbers that you presented tonight were going to hit that goal of, you know, coming in at, you know, the 110%? Or possibly, do we, do we need to amend it to go higher to our estimate?
So this is not my area of expertise on how to estimate a project like this, so we rely on our consultants to do that. So we have their number, and that's what I presented with you tonight. If the low bid comes in more than 10% above that number, DOT does give us a period of time that I can bring it back to you at that time, saying, hey, it came over. Would you like to award or not award?
And this is the new revised number from back when we, because we first talked about a $3 million something and some change, if I remember right?
Yeah, this number has increased since the initial concepts of this project.
Thanks, Your Honor.
Anybody else up here?
Yes, Your Honor. Heather, for the grant, could you let us know how long it took to receive that, like, from applying for it, getting it, we, you know, to this point? How long has it been?
Yes, so the grant that we applied for, the short name of the program is City Bridge. I believe it's part of the highway bridge funding that has some federal and state funds and swap, depending on the size of the project. But when we applied for that, they award it for the next federal fiscal year, so it's almost a year in advance from when you apply for it to when you could potentially go out to bid. In addition to that, the permitting and environmental process, we had not started through the DOT process because we were planning on a local letting. That also took a good year and a half. A lot of that year and a half, though, was, was dealing with the UP and the permits associated with that. We had a UP permit to go out for a local letting. However, they require the construction to hap, happen within three years, and because of the grant funding pushing it back, they had to start over on that permitting process. So that's what took some of the additional time, but, I mean, we were, we were pretty close to, probably about two years, probably, delay because of the grant.
Okay, sounds good. Just so we, we kind of have an idea on timing on these things, because that's, we have to wait on that, and then planning and everything, so thank you.
You know, us up here? Anybody in the public want to comment? Roll call time.
Nichols?
Yes.
Schneider?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Fonseca?
Yes.
Cal?
Yes.
Ladihov?
Yes.
Mitchell?
Yes.
Very good. On to the next on the public hearing.
A public hearing and resolution to approve the urban renewal plan amendment for the Marshalltown Urban Renewal Area Number Two.
That is the title read by the clerk, then the mayor announces the public hearing is open at 6:43 and asks for staff review.
Okay, I'll take this one. So the council passed a resolution in August in support of a business expansion project for TIG distributing. This amendment adds that project to the plan in Area Number Two. We will provide them with tax increment financing support. They will do an expansion of their manufacturing facilities and create 50 new jobs. The anticipating, anticipated commitment will be an amount not to exceed $1,650,000 plus administration fees not to exceed $15,000. So this will add that project to the plan, and then on consent, we did set a public hearing on the development agreement that will come forward at the November 10th meeting.
Very good, thank you. You didn't get any written comments on this one, I'll bet?
No, Your Honor.
And now I open it to the public. Seeing no one rushing to the microphone, I'll close the public hearing at 6:44 PM, and now I solicit a motion to, uh, approve it, and we'll have more discussion by the council.
For approval, Your Honor?
I'll second.
Thank you. Any further discussion up here? Roll call.
Schneider?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Fonseca?
Yes.
Cal?
Yes.
Ladihov?
Yes.
Mitchell?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
For those of you who haven't been at the meetings where TIG has told us what's going on, it's an exciting development to have a local company doing well and improving and adding more jobs here, so. Good for them and good for us. All right, on to...
Ordinance 15111 to amend the official zoning map for 212 East State Street from Urban Core Zoning District to Mixed Use Zoning District, third reading.
Motion?
I so move.
Second. Any discussion? Up here, out there? I guess it wouldn't hurt to just have...
Do I need to give, do I need to, it's the third reading, and we do have Mr. Joel Jackson here if we do have any questions.
Summarizing in an elevator speech where it is and what it involves.
Okay, I can do that. Council is considering the third reading of an ordinance to rezone 212 East State Street, otherwise known as the McDonald's site, proposed McDonald's site. The change supports reinvestment at an existing commercial location. No changes since the second reading. Planning and zoning recommended this approval. Staff recommends approval and final adoption, and...
We're up to the eighth floor out of town.
Say that again. So, as I mentioned, Mr. Joel Jackson with Bishop Engineering is here if there are any questions.
Thank you. Now I know what we're talking about. Does that change it up here or out there? Thanks for coming, Joel. Let's vote.
Okay. Fonseca?
No.
Cal?
Yes.
Ladihov?
Yes.
Mitchell?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Schneider?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
We have a new ordinance with a new zoning map. All right, next one.
Ordinance to amend the code of ordinance to the city of Marshalltown, Iowa by repealing and replacing Chapter 72 Parking Rules, Section 72.102B and 72.109, first reading.
Solicited a motion and second before we discuss.
I so move.
Thank you.
Second, Your Honor.
Discussion.
Good evening. Heather Thomas, Public Works. In front of you tonight is the first reading on an amendment related to parking. This is stemming from our new parking configuration downtown back in Engle. This was requested by officers with the police department and also a question posed to us by our parking enforcement, individual in housing community development as well. So what we wanted to do is include in our ordinance, back in Engle parking, and that you are to back into those stalls and not pull in. Pulling in does create some safety concerns, crossing traffic as well as then getting back out of your stall in particular. So we're about two months in since this parking configuration has been open downtown, and our focus has been over the last two months and will continue to be through the readings of this ordinance to educate the population and not penalize the population. So I've included a brochure that's in your memo. We've handed out over 250 of those to vehicles we've seen that have pulled in to that stall. We tried to use the KISS method in amending this ordinance in that we wanted to say, hey, parallel parking is our standard. If you are not restricted from parking, there's not 90 degrees, there's not angle. So all of those areas in town, the standard is parallel parking, regardless of whether or not there's any pavement marking on the pavement. In areas where 90-degree paint is shown, vehicles may pull forward or back in, it's their call, and there's no issues with either. For angle stalls, you see angle lines, you should be able to tell by the direction that they're going, whether you're supposed to pull in or back in, but we are not leaving it up to just the angles of pavement markings. Angle stalls will always be pull-in unless they are signed back in. And so those four items are the amendments that we're requesting to be changed in Chapter 72, and with that, I will open it up for questions.
Questions up here first?
Your Honor, I do have a question. Heather, I'm sorry if I missed this, but did you, so if someone is pulling in to the back end on the other side, I think you mentioned that, is, I know we're not penalizing, but would that have been, would that, would people get a ticket for doing that, going in, you know, on the opposite side?
This, yep, this ordinance amendment would allow an officer to ticket that configuration if it passes, yes. But right now, again, our focus is solely on educating.
And we're on our first reading still, too, of three.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Bill's up here, otherwise, public comment?
Jim Schaaf, 52 North Second Street. This is stupid. I said it was stupid two months ago. I went up there with Mr. Thompson one night and tried to do it. Mr. Thompson's vehicle would have caved in the fender of the vehicle next to him because he ended up over the line. Mine, I did not use my backup camera because I wanted to see what it's like going without it. I ended up over the lines. My girlfriend came up to witness me parking and him parking, and she tried to get where she could back in, and there were three cars behind her and they wouldn't let her. She waved her hand out the window, she wanted to back in, she had to go around the block. At that same time, this was back when we had the Legionnaires stuff going on, and there was a WHOTV-13 lady here. I went up to her and asked her, you know, how often do you go to other cities? She says, almost every day. And I asked her if you've ever seen anything this stupid, and she goes, who thought of this? She says, I was parked, she said she was parked over on the courthouse side. And she says, a deputy sheriff come over and told her that she needed to back in on the other side. And he said he wasn't going to take her, but he'd appreciate it if she'd move. And I said, so you haven't seen this? And she says, who thought of this? I was, well, the councilman, Mr. Thompson, told me it was his idea, and we're friends, and it's still a stupid idea.
Anybody want to follow that?
No.
Oh goodness.
Lonnie Hoglan, 14 East Main. I think it's a big learning curve. When it's all said and done, it'll be better. Is there some pretty big signage? I guess I haven't paid attention. Is there a sign that says, hey, park the right way? Yeah, maybe have some huge signs for a little while till everyone get used to it. It'll, it'll work. Be patient.
Anybody else? Let's call the roll.
Yes.
Mitchell?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Schneider?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Fonseca?
Yes.
Cal?
Yes.
All right, we'll have a second reading in a future meeting, and we have another public hearing. What's that about?
Public hearing in Ordinance 15112 to amend the code of ordinance to the city of Marshalltown, Iowa by adding attendance requirements to Chapter 150 Planning, Plan and Zoning Commission, Chapter 31 Officers and Organizations, Chapter 156 Zoning Board of Adjustment, Chapter 154 Electrical Board, third reading.
And a public hearing is now open at 6:53 PM. We do staff review, and then I ask you if we got any written comments. Want to do both?
Yes, I will. So staff recommends adding attendance requirements to all of our board and commissions to promote accountability and regular attendance, ensuring that we have quorum. The reason for this public hearing is when you have a text amendment on the zoning code, you do have to have a public hearing, so this is mainly for the addition to the Chapter 150 Planning and Zoning and the Chapter 156 Zoning Board of Adjustment.
And you didn't get any written comments on this one?
No, Your Honor.
There won't be any public comment either, but if anybody really wants to address this one, run up to the mic now, and otherwise, the hearing is closed at 6:54 PM, and I solicit a motion, and we'll have discussion if the motion is...
Your Honor, if I may?
You may.
Yes, I would, I would like to amend an expansion on this amendment, Chapter 31-001. I feel that we should be held at a higher standard than the volunteer boards that we nationally have.
Point of order? Yeah, you're, we need to have a motion to be on the, on the table first before we can amend it.
So I so move?
Second. Okay. Now it's been moved and seconded that we passed this, and now it's time for discussion up here, and so if there were going to be a motion to amend, this would be the time to do that?
Your Honor, if I may, yes, I'd like to make a motion to expand this amendment, Chapter I feel it's, we should be held at a higher standard than the volunteer boards that we have, and so my motion is set to basic attendance requirements for mayor and council with beginning of January 2026. First is, mayor and council persons should attend all meetings, either workshops, entire in-person or electronic, with the exception of illness or death to a family member. Number two, if you can't attend meetings, you must be in advance, contact the city administrator in advance of your being gone. Number three, missing more than 10% of the meetings in a year, which is three meetings, have deduction of wage, and if, oh, excuse me, let me back up there, meetings, or have an excuse, would lead to a reprimand and salary deduction. Number four would be current compensation of salary would be like $229.16 per council meeting for counselors. Number five, salary deduction for mayor would be $458.33. Number six, if mayor pro temp is proceeding in the meeting, that the pro temp would receive a portion of mayor compensation over council's compensation. Number seven, mayor would need to be in the city hall office, a minimum of 12 to 16 hours per week so that staff and public would be able to be in contact with the mayor. Thank you.
I'm not going to ask you to read that one back until I ask if there's a second. Your Honor, I'll second it just so if I can ask a question, so I'll second that. Okay. It's been, the amendment has been moved and seconded. Time for discussion on the motion to amend. May I, Your Honor?
You may.
Uh, is, you had seven items, is that correct? Seven bullet points?
Correct.
So you're making that all, it's all or nothing, all seven of those are in the, in the one amendment, correct?
As of now, yes.
Okay, that's what I wanted to clarify. Thank you. Any other questions or comments up here about the motion to amend, which I think only requires discussion by council, not by the public? Correct me if I'm wrong. Roll call on the motion.
Your Honor, if this gets approved, this is the final reading, so then it, the next time it just happen, it just goes into effect then? Okay.
On January 1st?
I would probably want to check with legal counsel if this was a substantive enough change that it would start the readings back over, so.
I think it is.
Yeah, I, I would say it probably is, yes.
I guess that's right, actually.
Yes, I agree with Alicia on that. If, if council has interest in pursuing a change like this, we could also bring it forward as a separate proposal.
Go ahead.
My thoughts on this echo what Carol just said, that we're at the second reading to address a known issue, and we're potentially looking at holding up this process to address an unknown issue or a potential issue that we haven't experienced. Also, I, I think the review by legal would help provide direction and clarity that what is put forth can be put into effect, so I would be in support of us doing this work, identifying it and revisiting it at a later date.
Thank you. Other council comments before we call the roll? Let's call the roll. Are those in favor of the amendment?
Nichols?
No.
Schneider?
No.
Thompson?
No.
Fonseca?
No.
Cal?
No.
Ladihov?
No.
Mitchell?
Yes.
Failed, so now we're back to the regular motion. Any further discussion by the council on the original motion? If not, we'll ask for a public comment. Not seeing any? Let's call the roll on this one, please.
Thompson?
Yes.
Fonseca?
Yes.
Cal?
Yes.
Ladihov?
Yes.
Mitchell?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Schneider?
Yes.
All right, that one carried. On to discussion items, the first one of which is the solid waste study. Before we go on to that, I'd like to, I, I meant to mention at the beginning of the meeting, and I, I see Robert Mahary over here, Erin and he had their first baby this, just recently, her name is Egrid. He's not getting a whole lot of sleep these days, so be kind to him, but congratulations, Robert. If you, if you, yeah, the applause is out of order, I'm sorry, and I'd also like to note, she is one cute kid, if you, if you check out his Facebook page. All right, on to the more mundane things, let's go on to the solid waste study discussion. Who's taking the lead on this one?
Your Honor, this is Carol. Laurel Waterman is a student at Iowa State University who worked on this study, is, I'm hoping she's in chambers.
She's at the microphone right now.
Okay, good, so...
You don't have to wing it.
Yeah, okay, good. So Laurel has been spending the last few months gathering a lot of information related to the solid waste system in Marshalltown, and the report was included in council's packet, but she will be giving an overview of her findings as well as some possible alternatives for council to consider.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Laurel Waterman, and I am not a student, I will just correct that. I did just graduate, so I'm sure I look like a student. But I work for the Institute of Design Research and Outreach in the College of Design at Iowa State University, and I'm the one who conducted the Marshalltown Waste Management Study, so I'm just going to be presenting the results tonight. So I do apologize if I talk fast because I have a lot to get through in only 15 minutes, but I'm just going to go ahead and get into it. So the first thing I wanted to do is review the goals of the waste management study. The first goal was to assess current waste management practices and services. The second was to gather community needs and preferences. The third was to research successful alternative practices, and the fourth was to present a set of recommended actions to implement. set of recommended actions to implement. The study was conducted from June through October of this year, and the main way that I collected information was through interviews, meetings, and a focus group. This was done with city staff, people in the waste management industry in Marshalltown, as well as people in other communities. I conducted a community survey. This got 960 respondents, and I gathered both quantitative and qualitative data. And then I just did general research, looking at other reports, city websites, and then collecting some data of my own. So, one thing that I did want to preface in this presentation is kind of the mindset that I was approaching this study with. I decided that I wanted to approach it with a consensus decision-making mindset. This is an alternative to majority rule, which just makes decisions based on what the majority of people think, and also is an alternative to making decisions based on what might logistically make the most sense on paper. So, basically, consensus decision-making, the ultimate goal is to find a set of solutions, or in this case, recommendations, that everyone with all viewpoints can support or at least agree to live with. This can encourage working with each other rather than against each other. The implementation process can, is more likely to have success, because it's garnering more support and less pushback. And it can protect those with a minority opinion, because it looks at people with all sets of viewpoints, even if it's maybe 5% of the population. So, basically, the entire goal is not to make one group of people 100% happy and satisfied while leaving some people an outright disagreement. The goal is for basically everybody to read the report and fully understand all of the recommendations, and just be like, "Yeah, sure, I can get behind that." So, the second preface I have is I do not have enough time to explain all of the background information that went into making these decisions, or any of the rationale for these decisions. I'm just scratching the surface tonight. So, a bunch of people probably might leave here confused, or having outstanding questions, or maybe just flat-out disagreeing with some of them. But if anybody has those thoughts, I really encourage you to read the report before making those conclusions. So, the 38-page report is broken into three topics. The first topic is the waste collection system. This is who is responsible for collecting waste and how it is done. The second is garbage and junk nuisances. This addresses garbage accumulation and/or visible junk on residential properties. And the third is waste diversion, which is recycling, composting, and waste reduction. So, all of the information that was collected on the waste collection system, I looked at all of the waste disposal surfaces, services that are offered in Marshalltown. I detailed and assessed the costs and benefits of all possible collection systems. This includes open market, municipal, contract municipal, organized, segmented, and zonal. I unfortunately don't have time to explain all of those. I outlined all of the services that all of the collection companies offer in Marshalltown. I compared prices in Marshalltown compared to other communities. I do calculations of road damage of different collection systems. I also mapped out the garbage routes and schedules of all of the collection companies on days of the week, and then also collected resident city staff, stakeholder, and outside input. So, the first recommendation and is, and this is not only the biggest recommendation in the topic, but also the whole study, is maintaining the open market system. So, this is the only recommendation I'm going to read directly from the report, because it's obviously pretty important. So, the report says, "The most common practice for cities is to have a municipal or contract municipal collection system. While these are arguably the most efficient and streamlined systems, most residents are satisfied with the current collection system, with many having strong loyalty to their current providers. This could be viewed as an obstacle to transitioning to a different system, but having satisfaction with and loyalty to local businesses is an aspect that makes Marshalltown special. Listening to resident preferences and supporting local businesses could be more beneficial to the community than transitioning to a system that lacks community support. Municipal and organized collection systems have been eliminated as possible options for this study. Additionally, because municipal, contract, segmented, and zonal garbage collection would eliminate customer choice and risk severe damage to the current hauling businesses, things the Marshalltown community values, it is recommended that the City of Marshalltown maintain its open market collection system. While alternative collection systems would help alleviate the several issues that accompany an open market system, there are alternative practices the city can implement within the current system that can help." So, that is that main recommendation. So, the recommendations within the report are split into solidified recommendations that I believe the city should implement, because I think they would be successful. But there are also optional practices for consideration. These are things that could be successful, but I was not yet comfortable formally recommending them with the information that I gathered. But to make sure the study was comprehensive, these optional practices were included as the things that the council could consider exploring further if they choose. So, the first one is a consolidated pickup schedule. This would be regulating where collection companies can pick up based on days of the week. However, I did conclude that there is no simple way to implement this system without overly burning, burdening the smaller collection companies. If you were to go further with it, it would require getting all the collection companies in one room, doing some sort of facilitated workshop to come up with some way that the system could exist. However, I do believe that it is unlikely that a system would be enough of an improvement or kind of bare enough benefits to the community to outweigh kind of that tedious process of transitioning to a regulated pickup schedule. So, the second optional practice for consideration is an expanded collection market. If you choose to explore this further, you could open up the collection market to allow more collection, more outside collection companies to enter the market, which could increase competition and lower prices. You would have to balance that with increased road damage. So, those are all the recommendations for the waste collection system. The second topic is garbage and junk nuisances. The information collected on this, I reviewed the current city codes regarding nuisances, garbage, and recycling requirements, and open burning. I looked at the history of junk and cleanup events in Marshalltown, what's worked and what hasn't. I did a windshield survey to assess the average number of properties with visible junk or garbage in Marshalltown on a given day. I compared the number of nuisance cases in Marshalltown compared to other cities, and again, I collected resident city staff, stakeholder, and outside input. Wait, did I? Yeah, I did that. Okay, sorry. So, the main recommendation for this topic is improved garbage and junk disposal programs. There were four main changes that I recommend considering in a future junk program, and that's outlined in the report. But basically, I kind of gave a proposal, or like a two theoretical programs that could be adopted in Marshalltown. The first is an expanded Marshalltown junk program. So, this would be highly inspired by Des Moines scrub events, and this would change it from only one day a year where people can drop off their junk for free in town. It would switch it to one day, and again, this is just a recommendation and a proposal, but one day a month from about March to, through October, people can take their junk directly to the Marshall County landfill with proof of residence. And there could also be an option for every other month, contracting a collection company to schedule residential, like curbside pickups. And then the second program that I propose is a garbage service voucher program. This would address households that choose not to or cannot pay for regular garbage pickup services. And it would basically allocate a certain number of vouchers and give it to a certain number of households in Marshalltown in need, and basically pay for their garbage pickup services for a year. So, there's more information in the report on those two things. But the optional practices for consideration is a garbage service requirement. This is not very common in communities that have an open market system, but it is very common in communities that have a municipal or a contract municipal system. So, it is kind of a gray area. All of the information that I gathered, I could only find one community in Iowa that has an open market system and requires garbage service, which is Knoxville. So, if you decided you could further figure out the legal requirements and legal ramifications of requiring something like this. And then another optional practice would be a review of nuisance code and procedures, making sure they're straightforward and transparent. Then the third topic is waste diversion. I collected information on Marshalltown recycling services, processes, and prices, composting and yard waste services and prices. I researched recycling best practices. I also looked at how other communities take care of their recycling, along with resident city staff, stakeholder, and outside input. The first recommendation would be an investment in a single-stream recycling system. I will not sugarcoat this, this would be a significant investment. However, Mid-Iowa Workshop, the Marshall County landfill, and the City of Marshalltown would all have a big stake in this. So, that could be looked at as kind of a long-term, possibly feasible investment to improve recycling services for residents and collection companies together. The second recommendation is improved recycling drop-off. There are two sub-recommendations that are kind of like an and/or, you could do both or either one of them. One of them is working with the landfill to make recycling drop-off at the landfill completely free. The second would be creating a recycling drop-off location in town. Ideally, this would be close to Mid-Iowa Workshop. The third recommendation is improved yard waste services. This also has two sub-recommendations. The first could be, or would be, a contracted citywide yard waste pickup service. And this could be either a existing collection company would get this contract, or an outside one. And then the second kind of sub-recommendation would be increased funding for the compost facility to expand hours and reduce prices, and/or reduce prices. Fourth recommendation is expanded education and outreach on recycling and waste diversion. Currently, the Marshall County landfill, they are responsible for this, and they have their own program for this. However, a lot of people that I talked to through the study believe that education is the most important part of increasing recycling rates and just bettering waste manage, personal waste management practices. So, the city could support Marshall, the Marshall County landfill's program, they could do kind of their own thing, they could partner with the library, the public schools, but youth education is a really important part, because it kind of makes a bigger impact, and it can also come home and kind of break through language barriers. Optional practices for consideration would be a citywide recycling contract. This would consolidate all recycling pickup services to one collection company, and it would also provide recycling pickup to all households, at least single-family households. And then the second one would be city initiatives. This would be prioritizing recycling and waste diversion within kind of the public sphere. It could be providing recycling bins next to all public trash cans, or implementing a composting program in the public schools, stuff like that. So, those are all of the recommendations. I kind of split them in, again, into top recommendations that I would prioritize, which is an improved garbage and junk disposal program, which would include an expanded and improved junk program, and a garbage service voucher program, shared investment in a single-stream recycling system, improved recycling drop-off, which would include free drop-off at the landfill, and/or in town, an in-town drop-off location, improved yard waste services, which would include yard waste pickup contract and/or increased funding at the compost facility, and expanded recycling and waste education and outreach. And then optional practices would be a citywide recycling contract, a consolidated pickup schedule, an expanded collection market, garbage service requirements, reviewing nuisance code and procedures, and city waste diversion initiatives. That is all I have.
Do you have a question?
Yeah.
When you did your windshield survey, do you think that the city would benefit with mandated garbage pickup?
I feel like that's a decision up to the council. That's kind of why I, I think the reason why I did not formally recommend it was because I was not sure how much pushback that would get, and I also was not sure about the legal ramifications of it. It is not uncommon for cities to do that, because, I mean, there's plenty of cities that require it. I think it's just kind of a gray area. Sorry, I don't have like, an exact answer for that. But yeah.
How does Knoxville enforce the requirement?
That, I added that kind of recommendation very recently, so I was not able to reach out to Knoxville. I definitely could have done that. But, yeah, that's also a question that's, that I included in the report, is you would also have to see how you would even enforce that, how you could even check if a household has garbage service or not. I mean, would you have to like, call up every single collection company? I'm not sure. So, yeah, there's kind of a lot to figure out with that. That's why the garbage service voucher program was recommended, to kind of deal with that.
Other questions or comments by the council?
Your Honor?
Yes.
Yeah, I have a question. So, what I was hoping to see more of in this report were some abilities to have us be able to enforce the ordinances more. Things come to mind like adding something that on trash receptacles, you have to add a colored band or some sort of symbol to say what day of the week it's picked up. That way, people who are not bringing in their trash cans or leaving them out all week, we can identify, you know, when are the out-of-ordinance. I also do like the idea of still coordinating what days areas get picked up in. So, I think we have more to think about, but, you know, the main problem here, it's absolutely not the people who pay their trash, bring their trash can in, don't have overflowing heaps of trash on their property. It's, it's the ordinance part of this, and that's why we got set down this path.
Other council comments? Your Honor? I just want to make comment. Laurel, I'm impressed. Nice job.
Thank you. This was my big, first big project on the job, so.
You did a good job.
Thank you.
There is hope for the youth after all, Your Honor. I was amazed at the good survey response you got.
I was very excited about that, yeah. Thank you, everyone, if you took the survey.
Okay, no other council comments?
Your Honor, may I?
Sure.
So, I'm just wondering what council would like to see as next steps?
Your Honor?
Yes.
Laurel, could you talk to us about the recycling part of it? I think when we had met, the examples that were given were more of having like portable, recyclable areas that a resident constituent could go drop off, glass, or cardboard, or et cetera. Could you talk to us about that?
Yeah, that recommendation, that's kind of the improved recycling drop-off recommendation. If anybody knows about the recycling drop-off location in Ames, they have it at their Resource Recovery Center, and they just have big bins. Basically, it would kind of be the same recycling bins that the landfill has, that you would sort stuff out, but it would just be in town, ideally near Mid-Iowa Workshop, because that's where it's eventually going, and so you could also save on transportation costs from that. But yeah, it would definitely, hopefully, increase recycling rates and access to recycling for those who may not be able to pay for it. So, that is one recommendation to do that. Ideally, it would be free, because then you'd have to, you know, have somebody staffed there, you know, stuff like that. So, yeah.
Okay, I think where I'm at in this is, it's important for the community to keep their private haulers, and that's the recommendation that you gave. But I'm thinking adding on to that, the recycling part of it. I know there's recycling, some haulers provide that, and you've explained that, and, but also, I think as a community with, you know, handling our trash and our plastics, cans, everything glass, I think we should have a site where we can go and recycle that, and go and take things. So, if, I want to hear what everybody has to say about it, but where I'm at is keeping the private haulers, keeping it the same with that, and adding on a recyclable option for the community as a whole. And, and even adding the junk days. I think you said Des Moines has a junk day where you have to take, you have to provide your proof of residency, and you can take your garbage to the landfill for free. So, and obviously, there's other cost implications, and we can talk about that further, but I'm just thinking about this as like a plan, just to work on kind of having that education on, not just, because as far as I know, is just, you know, leaving my cans outside, and then my private my, um, cans outside and then my private hauler comes and gets them. But, um, I think that if for those who like to recycle and, um, haven't had the education on where to recycle, I think having that location would be good. Um, I think, what was the other recommendation? Laura, can you go back to the other, the maybe two slides before this? Uh, or the, sorry, the next one. Yeah, I'm trying to think of the other ones you were talking about. So the, a junk day, um, adding on recycling, uh, keeping the private haulers, okay, the, um, ordinance, um, requiring, um, all, you know, households to have some type of, of private hauler or garbage service. So I think I would like to hear everybody, everybody else has to say about that, but I'm thinking that if we want to go into, you know, keeping things clean and moving forward, recycling, I think that, um, putting that in there is the way to go for, towards the future. So I want to hear everybody else's say.
Your honor, if I may, I'm, I have to, I mean, I agree with, uh, Council Fonseca. I, hopefully what we're doing tonight is putting this to bed that we're going to keep the private hauler system. But Laurel, you've hit some great points here that I think, and to answer Carol's question, I think the further discussions need to be about, and what Counsel Snyder brought up, we still need to address people leaving their trash out for multiple days. You know, we don't know what day the hauler comes. I think there's ways we can address that without making the haulers change their routes. Um, I do want to follow up a lot with Counsel Fonseca's ideas about, uh, drop-off points here in Marshalltown because that is a big obstacle is to, for people to take stuff to landfill. So Carol, I guess what I'm asking is, uh, are you okay with us putting, putting this to bed that we're going to stay with the private haulers, but we want to have further discussions down the road about some of these other things that Laurel's brought up?
Yeah, yes, I was looking for a general direction on do we want to keep the open market system? Um, and then I can take these recommendations and, and vet them a little bit more, um, and find out sort of how would we pay for these things? What are the partnerships we could develop? Um, I, is it, we, could we legally require garbage service? Those kinds of things that I can, I can work on the recommendations that Laurel's made.
Your honor, I don't, I don't know anybody who's, who wants a municipal garbage service. I do know that we've had drop-off days, uh, where you could bring anything and drop it in and they really weren't very well attended. About the last three, four years, we've had those and they, uh, for what you would think we would get, uh, we didn't get that much really. So I don't know if that's a communication problem or if it's a location problem. Um, so I think those are the kind, kinds of things that we need to look at. Plus, um, I'd like to hear, uh, roll around an idea of mandatory garbage service. I'm not sure if I'm for it, but, um, I think we ought to discuss it anyway.
Sure.
So, yeah, we, we still have the issues to address that just, the Counsel Snyder mentioned, which is those that just plain abuse the system and don't do anything with their junk. Now, I like the voucher or at least explore that idea to see if it's, it's a matter of expense and not being able to afford it. Is there ways to alleviate that? But some of these cases, it's just they don't care. So how, so it's going to have to be a real tender balance between making sure we support those that just can't afford it and those that are just, don't care what they're, they're doing to their neighborhood.
I know I'm the oldest guy here, but, um, am, am I imagining things? When we moved here in 1986, we actually had drop-off places for recycling. Was it out by the mall, I think was one of the spots. Then we had, had one down by the railroad tracks just north.
I think there was like, been by the railroad tracks for a while. I think there's like three.
I wonder what, I wonder why that evaporated.
Sure it was cost.
Yeah, time for, Melissa, Bill's up here. Yeah.
Your honor?
Barry?
Thank you. Um, I would say the, the consistent three themes I've heard from the public on this, um, one are the non-uniform pickup dates and the study did highlight that. And I live in an area where three days a week, we have garbage cans, uh, sitting out and what haulers, what day that, I know what hauler I have, so I know what day that is, but I, I do know people abuse it. That goes to, I had the candidate forum last week, a lot of people are, were talking about, uh, ensuring Marshalltown's clean, um, everything's up kept. So I think there's work to be done there. Um, I did contrast that, I did look in Ames, I was by their high school. They do have the open market system, but, um, you could see the, the toters out by the road, all different colors. So there, there are probably communities we can reference from a zone, uh, collection perspective. And again, it's just to help the enforcement aspect of it that is in the ordinance. And generally it's, it's upkeeping our neighborhoods. I'll say the, the second feedback I, I've heard pretty consistently are those neighbors or people in the community that do not have regular garbage collection and the sanitary concerns and the, uh, types of things that attracts are concerning. But then the third thing that we all hear is the desire to maintain the open market system. So I don't know how that second one requiring garbage collection and maintaining the open market system, those appear to be likely mutually exclusive, but, um, yeah, we, we definitely have people in neighborhoods that are collecting garbage for extended periods of time and are, are creating, um, issues for neighbors that are, are hard for us to enforce. So I would say those are the, the three themes I've heard the most about and where I'd like to see us continue this conversation.
Thank you. Any other council comment before we open to the public? Public is, um, welcome.
Jim Shaw, 522 North Second Street. And while it seems that I'm at odds with Gary Thompson a lot, I agree that you did an excellent job of your presentation.
You just set a record.
Todd Whitmore, Mid Iowa Workshop, Marsh Town. Uh, we currently do the recycling for Marshall County. In your, your review, did you have a cost for the single stream systems?
Um, yeah, so I, um, I consulted, um, Mark Pepler from City of Ames. Um, and he, I kind of have his whole spiel on it somewhere in here. He said that, um, it can range, sorry. As he said that it can range, um, from about like one million to five million for like a fully sorted machine. I can, you can read it in there. Um, but he did say that there are options for a, for cheaper systems to be made, um, for lower volumes. Um, but yeah.
Uh, obviously the cost would be a huge factor for Mid Iowa Workshop. Our current volume, I would say we're probably forty, fifty percent capacity. So I feel we wouldn't need that system, even if the recycling program progressed and we did more tonnage a, a week or a month. But like I say, the cost would be a huge factor for Mid Iowa Workshop. Thank you.
Any other public comment? Uh, Carol, do you think, uh, you've got enough staff direction to move forward?
Yeah, I think I have what I need.
Okay, I think Melissa had something else to add.
Carol, would it be possible to, um, reach back out to Eldora Sanitation to maybe invite them to apply again for the license because they had tried earlier this year and, um, a majority denied it? It was denied?
Uh, yes, we can reach back out to them.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. I think that Melissa says anything else. Uh, nice job again, Laurel. Uh, thanks for the input. Let's go on to the other discussion item for year twenty-seven, budget discussion, general fund for public works, road use tax, transfers, garbage, police fire, building and animal control. Who, who got, who drew the lost, the short straw on this one?
I think this is the appropriate time to remind the audience that if they don't want to stick around, they don't have to. Um, but.
If anybody has insomnia, stick around.
Okay, I'm going to open up a few items here. Okay, first one I'm going to go over is seven different functions that are all relatively minor within the general fund that Public Works has some level of involvement in. Um, I encourage you guys, if you're interested, to look through the memo at each of the functions individually. I'm only going to talk briefly about two of them on this list. Uh, the first one is function ten thirty. That's our emergency management function of that. In fiscal year twenty-five, we had a standalone pass-through assessment for Marshall County emergency management of thirty-seven thousand eight hundred and twelve dollars. So that pass-through is, uh, for Marshall County emergency management. It represents ninety-four percent of the expenses in this function and that's not part of our consolidated general fund levy. It's a separate standalone levy and that's where it shows up in our general fund budget. Outside of that, the expenses shown in this function is related to our tornado sirens and the electrical and repairs associated with those. We have eight of them here in the city. The next one I will go over, again, I'm going to skip through a lot of them that are small dollars or low interest and then those kind of things, um, but is mosquito and pest control. You will notice that we have not actually expended anything out of the general fund over the last three fiscal years. Uh, the city purchased a relatively large stockpile of mosquito, um, material back in twenty-twenty-one. That material, those barrels have a five to seven-year life. Um, so we're getting close to the end of that. We probably can continue to use that for another two years. Um, there's a way to rejuvenate it. Um, we spent sixty-five hundred at that time. So when there is a request for mosquito spraying, all of the equipment, labor and everything like that comes out of road use tax, the actual material, the chemical itself is the smaller cost of that and that's what comes out of the general fund. Um, so as far as efficiency or elimination opportunities within these seven functions in my memo, about the only one that we can cut would be mosquito spraying when we, uh, purchase those chemicals. With that, are there any questions about the seven functions of emergency management, flood control, sidewalks, street construction, mosquito, pest control, other public works and sanitary sewer that's funded with general fund money? Okay, we're going to go on to the airport. All right, uh, the function twenty-eighty is where our airport's annual operation and maintenance expenses are. That is the smaller amount compared to our debt service. So capital improvements like the two million dollar loan we just did for the hangar terminal is paid for with debt service does not show up in the general fund. Um, the items that show up in the general fund are just your annual operation and maintenance. Uh, we have about half of our expenditures out there right now are covered by revenue that we get out there and that's part of our twelve cents per gallon of fuel sales, sale, a farm rental. We have a hundred and six acre farm out there. Uh, we also have a small amount of area leased to the Marshall Gun Club. And then we also have a fifteen-year lease at twenty-eight thousand dollars, which is basically leasing the facility to operate a fixed base operation out there with Marshalltown Aviation. So that's, uh, generates, like I said, about half of our expenditures, um, roughly sixty-five thousand in, uh, revenue a year. Our annual expenditures have been about a hundred and thirty thousand, so net cost to the general fund coming out of the general fund consolidated levy over the past two years has been about sixty-five thousand. When we talk about cost drivers out there, we pay about thirty thousand dollars a year in insurance. Our contract with our airport manager is another thirty thousand. We contract the labor to provide snow and ice removal and mowing services. That's another thirty thousand. All of the equipment and those kind of things are from public works generally, sometimes park and rec as well, um, equipment. We spend about three thousand dollars a year for fuel for that equipment and we've been, knock on wood, the last two years relatively okay on the maintenance and repair side, um, with about ten thousand spent a year. But that's where you'll see the biggest departure between expenditures and budget is, knock on wood, we've been okay repairs and maintenance the last two years, um, three years actually. Uh, at the end of the fiscal year, I do not go through and say, how much money do I have left and spend it? I just leave it in the general fund. So, um, I know sometimes when you get to the end of the fiscal year, if you have money, you say, what needs do I have and then use those. Right now I've not been doing that and one of the primary reasons is I want to make sure the money that we're putting out there is the right dollars in the right place and the right priorities. Um, so we have a master plan in progress right now at the airport that I would like to use as the guidance document to when and where we spend those funds when we have budgeted a larger amount than what we're spending. Um, the large and efficiency opportunity is likely going to be electrical usage associated with the runway and airport lighting. We know that's very outdated at this time and that's one of the, um, projects that will come up probably in a CIP project at some point for replacement. Um, as far as fee for service opportunities out there with the current setup of leases, likely any additional service or fees we would able to collect out there would go to the manager themselves and that company and not the city, um, just the way that the leases are currently set up. Uh, recommendations moving forward is as leases expire or come to auto renewals, we should continue to reevaluate those based on the same parameters that the council committee had set. And then, um, also as that airport master plan comes to fruition, review those to understand where to, where to prioritize some of the needs that are out there. With that, are there any questions on the airport general fund?
Your honor, if I may? This may be more of a CIP question, Heather. I've noticed there, other airports are now fencing their airports in. Are we going to be required to do that in the future? Do you see that coming up for our small airport?
Um, I don't believe right now it's currently an FAA requirement. It is a recommendation, especially in some of those airports that have a large deer population. Obviously anytime an animal conflicts with the airport runway, that's a concern. Um, but to the best of my knowledge, it's not a requirement right now, but it's a recommendation when those areas, um, and some of those facilities have a large animal population.
Thanks Heather. Thanks, your honor.
My closest strike was a fox down in Wichita. About hit a fox on the taxiway.
Okay. Um, if that is all on that one, the next one I'm going to go into is the one that I consider the most complex. It is the functions that are funded in part by general fund dollars, but also public works enterprise funds and road use tax funds. So there are five functions in the general fund that I will open up. Right here, uh, twenty-ten roads, bridges and sidewalks, twenty-thirty, street lighting, twenty-forty, traffic safety, twenty-fifty, snow removal and twenty-six day, sixty highway engineering, which is just engineering. Highway was just a terminology, I think back in the day for roads, um, used in Marshalltown. So in the memo, I have prepared the same charts that all of us department heads have prepared. However, I'll be honest, if you look at these, I don't know how anybody could expect a council member to make sense of these. There are so many, um, splits in the time and the personnel costs and transfers that there is no way to make a, an educated, informed decision on, uh, the general fund in relation to these. So I put together a little bit of a PowerPoint to help explain some of these. And again, I did this in the tune of the objectives of these general fund presentations where we're trying to prepare and educate so that you guys have the ability to assist in determining and making decisions on efficiency, elimination and fees for service. So with that, these are again, the same, uh, tables showing fiscal years twenty-four, twenty-five and our current fiscal year twenty-six and the budgeted and actual expenditures in each of those areas over the last, over those five functions. One of the things I wanted to point out especially is the total budget column in these are often the amended budget. the amended budget. So at the beginning, before a fiscal year starts, you guys approve a budget, and then at usually the halfway point, when we're doing the next season's budget and we're halfway through it, you guys will amend a budget again. And that's a lot of the reasons why those numbers change, because we realize vacancies at that point. So if you go down to 2060, the engineering department, the budgeted raw expense number looks like it grew pretty dramatically between fiscal years '24, '25, and the current fiscal year '26. One of those reasons is because we've not realized the vacancy that we currently have yet. So as we amend the budget to you this winter, that budgeted raw expense number will go down. So that's just one of the things I wanted people to be aware of. Additionally, fund 2050, snow removal. The total budget there is not the budget that we actually spend on snow removal. It's the budget we spend on overtime for snow removal. And so the actual expenditures, unless we had a very, very low snow and ice winter, would always exceed the budget because we will bill the staff time to 2050, but the actual budget was seen initially in 2010, if that makes sense. So those are just two things I wanted to point out as we look at some of these charts. And then go in a step further. Many of the staff within Public Works are billed to several different pools of money, okay? General fund is one pool, road use tax is another pool, transit is an enterprise fund and acts as another pool, storm sewer, sanitary sewer. So all of these are different pockets that fund some of these positions. So as we talk about efficiency and elimination and transferring road use tax fund to the general fund for some of these positions, I wanted just to do a brief overview to kind of show the complexity of moving one person and saying how we're going to save costs or save expense or increase revenue and the differences of where that funding comes from. One minor exception on here, I've got the street division staff shown. That's a staff of 13. That's one supervisor, two mechanics, and 10 people that serve in one of the three levels of street maintenance workers. All of their time is budgeted for in 2010. However, occasionally, they'll bill an hour to another general fund when they're working on a vehicle, like if they do an oil change for the fire department, they will bill that one hour to the fire department for that oil change. Or if they're out at the compost facility, that would be billed directly to 750. Function 2050, again, that's the snow, and I mentioned on the last screen, again, the original budget is in the home function of 2010, but it bills to 2050 as it occurs. As far as the chart below, all the warm colors, so red, orange, yellow, and pink, all of that time and those percentages is what's part of that transfer from road use tax to the general fund to support the salary of those employees. As far as efficiency and elimination opportunities go on this slide, largely, these costs are personnel. While we continue to strive to find more efficient ways to do our tasks, that would likely increase, that would likely result in increased work being done and not necessarily a decrease in expense, just because of due to the minimal number of staffing in these positions, we're not able to find an efficiency that would completely eliminate an individual person. However, we continue to strive to do that, and one example is going to be on the stormwater side. Recently, we had a retirement, I believe it was in 2023, and we looked at that retirement and reworked that position to add a GIS component to help us with field documentation tools to improve our efficiency specific in the stormwater, and that's resulted in some cross-training of that stormwater coordinator position right now, and it will have additional capacity as we move forward and get that further implemented. That's been a huge help this year, this last year, when we've had so many fiber companies come to town. We needed some help in the right-of-way permit management, and that stormwater coordinator has taken a large lead in that to do that. As we talk about the last slide and how some of our employees are split and looking for cost-saving measures to the general fund, we always want to justify to make sure that the cost to the general fund, we're getting that value out of general fund things. So this is kind of a look or a checks and balance specific to the utility division in the facility and electrical. Within that division, I'm specifically talking about the one superintendent and the two electricians employed by the city. Up top right now is their wage distribution and the buckets that that comes from. So roughly, when you merge those three together just on a percentage basis, not on a wage-weighted basis, about 50% comes out of a general fund bucket and 50% comes out of a road use tax bucket, either being street lighting or traffic signals. When we look at the work orders that they've completed between April and September of this year, 78.5% of them have all been general fund-related. So in other words, the general fund's getting their money's worth from these three people. Road use tax that's paying for 50% of them gets about 17.7% of their work orders when we look at the last six. So in other words, from the general fund, I don't think there's additional time from them that we can take over to other entities. They are needed in the general fund where they're at right now. Another position, we have one custodian that's based out of the Public Works camp. Currently, 88% of their budget comes, or their salary, comes from the general fund. And we've been piloting, modifying those duties to add some time in for that individual out at water pollution control. Previously, Water Pollution Control hired a contract to help with some of those custodian duties, and we've been piloting where that individual goes out there three hours a day three times a week. And I think we've felt comfortable and we're understanding now what other staff members have to pick up to make that happen, to send that custodian out there sometime, and we're going to recommend to make this a permanent change. That's going to result in a general fund only supporting 66% of this position where it currently supports 88% today. So when I also attached the budget comparison report in the packet, again, a lot of numbers, and sometimes it's hard to follow those numbers. So I took those and I put them into buckets of expenses for each of these. So the expenses in each of these five functions, I separated into salaries for Public Works employees, salaries for park and rec employees, benefits, which are handled through the benefit levy, insurance handled through the insurance levy, and other expenses, both Public Works and park and rec. So that kind of shows and details that most of the costs here are related to salaries, benefits, and insurance. The table up top with the actual numbers, I then put in a graphical form down below. So the general fund consolidated levy supports about $3,100 of repairs and maintenance to park and rec's snow removal equipment. It pays for about $430 of general fund consolidated levy towards other expenses in Public Works, which is primarily the permitting, the paper and printing for general fund permitting that we do in the right-of-way. Insurance levy, a total of $82,000, is paid through the insurance levy and not the general fund consolidated levy. Benefits of another $543,000. And then as we look at the salaries for park and rec staff and public works staff in these five functions, that totals $1,080,000. Of that, $100,000 of it is paid for with the general fund consolidated levy, and 90.7% or $980,000 is transferred from road use tax. We also, by the way, transfer 10% of HR's salary, 10% of the city administrator's salary, and about $20,000 to cover finance salary from road use tax to the general fund as well. One of the questions recently that's come out and was mentioned again at the council candidate forum recently is, where does the road use tax money go? So I wanted to point that number out again. Over $1 million of that road use tax money goes to support these positions that we're talking about tonight. On this sheet, I have a yellow star next to the $240,000 of revenue from 2025. I wanted to expand on that because that's not typical. 2060, that's a function that engineering is the large driver of that. In 2023, we implemented a change in our fee for service, and that was in anticipation of a lot of these fiber companies coming to town. And there was a state legislation where you can have a permit fee upfront before a utility goes in a right-of-way, but you cannot have an annual ongoing fee. The city did not have it. Other cities in Iowa did, but Marshalltown did not. But we did look at our upfront fees and implemented a longitudinal permit. So per block, they have so much, so $25 if you're a franchise utility or $100 if you're a non-franchise utility, per block for a permit fee. And we did so, again, in anticipation of the large fiber companies coming to town. Revenue, after we made those changes before the fiber companies came to town, we got about $44,000 in permit fees. When the fiber came to town and pulled those permits, we actually got $240,000 in fiscal year '25 of revenue into the general fund. So actually, if you look at '25, again, it's not a very good look and realistic anticipation of the future because we actually made money in the general fund. When you look at these five functions, we added $137,000 to the general fund as opposed to being an expense. However, again, a more typical year of $45,000, we would be a net of about $59,000 of expenses from the general fund going to support these five functions in salaries. One of the other things to be aware of with those numbers is the restoration work on these permitting is usually a year or two behind when the permit was pulled. So while we brought the revenue in in fiscal year '25, we are continuing to have a lot of time spent on the permits and the revenue that were pulled back then, just with restoration concerns. As far as a fee-for-service opportunity, right now, we have a franchise agreement with both Consumers Energy and Alliant Energy. Alliant Energies in particular, they have a 0% franchise fee. Within that agreement, it says we cannot bill them anything more than what's collected through the franchise fee. So even though we have a permit fee, we can't bill Alliant Energy anytime they do work in our right-of-way because that franchise fee overrides that. So this past year, we looked at how many permits we've issued to Alliant Energy, and had we been able to collect our permit fees for that, that'd be another $3,000 of annual income. That would be a recommendation as we look at franchise fees or franchise agreements in the future is to understand that there's some permit time and time in the engineering department for reviewing those and inspecting those that we currently cannot capture because of those franchise agreements. As far as our permit fees within engineering, I have those listed in here. They are a fee-for-service opportunity. I did a change, like I said, back in 2023 when we implemented those, and for the easiest permit, where we have a contractor who has done work in Marshalltown before, they're already bonded, we already have on file their insurance, they come in, they have their permit paperwork filled out, we review it, approve it, we'll do an inspection, these fees cover that situation. The fees do not cover, the contractors who haven't done work in Marshalltown before have a lot of questions, and we do have some of those. So as we come to you, I guess the question is, do we set our fees, our permit fees, for the best-case scenario, which is how we've kind of had them right now, or the average? You know, from a homeowner's standpoint, if they are pouring themselves a new driveway or a new sidewalk, is it fair to charge them more than what it costs to help them with their driveway because other contractors don't? So we have not done that right now, but if council is looking for opportunities to increase fees, that would be one thing to look at. Like I said, right now, we're set easy-case scenario. Obviously, there are some cases that we spend more to be able to accomplish that and help those homeowners and help those contractors.
Heather, question?
Yes.
So how much of a variance is there really? I would assume that the vast majority of those, of the work would be done by experienced contractors. So how much, or is that not a true statement?
I, I think 50% of the permits, we could call easy, 50%, we spend a lot of time. I mean, it would not shock me. There are situations where we spend over $1,000 in salaries to get a project through for just a single driveway. There's a lot of handholding, going back, talking to their insurance company, talking to their bonding company so that they can get the bonds to work in our right-of-way to protect the public, to protect the utilities in the, in the right-of-way. So it is definitely a process that I think people who are not familiar with working for the public have not gone through when they are a mom-and-pop show or a one-man contractor. It's fine if they can pour concrete, that's great, but in Marshalltown, in our right-of-way, we have to have certain requirements because we are trying to protect the public from a health and safety standpoint. And then also, we have so many utilities in different right-aways, we want to make sure if something gets damaged that we're able to assist. And that's been really, really helpful with these fiber projects because we have had so many cases where an individual homeowner reaches out to the city and asks us for help. And if we didn't have those bonds in place, if we didn't require the insurance from those contractors, we would not have been able to help those homeowners, whether it was a fiber line that got bored through a sanitary service line or something like that. We have, we have those situations. So yes, it's maybe additional red tape, as some people say, but they're there for a reason. And unfortunately, the documentation and the effort it takes to make sure those are followed through does take a lot of time in some cases.
That's a little different percentage than I was thinking in my head.
Okay, we're going to go back to this screen. Just like we did on the utility side, is the cost to the general fund for these salaries in line with what we're spending? So we're talking about the $100,000 the general fund provides in salaries. Does that make sense? Is that justified? So we did this in 2024. We completed it for the calendar year 2023, and we estimated how many hours functions, both the street division and the engineering division, spent doing general fund tasks, meaning things that are not eligible to be paid for with road use tax funds. The street division, we estimated in, in 2023, they spent about 1,100 hours or about $33,000 doing general fund things between parking lot maintenance, assisting with some other buildings that are general fund buildings. And then the one that I wanted to point out, I know some of you guys are aware of it, some of you may not, but we also load and haul the snow from the YMCA parking lot. We estimated about 96 hours that year. So as we talk about efficiency, elimination, opportunities, fees for service, I did want to point that out. It's been a long-term community partnership. I'm not necessarily recommending doing anything. I just wanted to make sure it was known. My understanding is initially that was brought about because of the two large swimming events that they bring in late in the winter season, and when their parking lot had so much snow in it, they didn't have parking for these large events that brings in a lot of sales tax, local option, fills our hotels, motels, and those kind of things. Obviously, one of those state swim meets are no longer coming to Marshalltown, but that is still a service that we continue to do. Engineering division, back in 2023, we estimated about $120,000 of our salaries go to things that are not road use tax-eligible, such as sidewalks, general fund permits, driveways, building permits, salaries tied to the airport work that we do. Again, there's no salaries directly in the 2080 airport fund. That's all coming out of engineering staff, park and rec, and libraries, and public safety. So back in 2023, we justified very easily over $150,000 a salary, and we only move $100,000 within. So again, the general fund is not being unduly burdened by these other projects, and there are opportunities there that we are providing. So I hope that didn't bore anybody. That is the end of that presentation, and I will open it up to questions.
Your Honor, may I?
May I?
So Heather, since you started out by calling us stupid that we wouldn't understand these numbers, I'm going to ask you a stupid question. You're smiling, right?
Yes. Yes.
we obv-, we obviously saved money, you know, you talked about the salary for the, the engineer. We saved that, but really, it cost us money in the long run. Some of your numbers are probably inflated, because we had to outsource and do things. I mean, can you touch on that, or do we want to stay away from that tonight?
Um, I'll, I'll touch briefly on it, that's definitely a discussion that I'd recommend you have with the city administrator, but first of all, as far as stupid and difficulty to understand this, I've been through three budget cycles here, and some of this has taken me all three years to even understand where the money comes from and how it transfers, so please don't take that as any offense, it was just something that was not straightforward, and I don't know how any council member could understand that from the documents you're provided.
It's fine, you're among friends here.
But specific to the engineering role and the vacancy that's there, that engineer role was for in-house engineering of projects, which we've had limited capacity to do this last year. That combined with the park and rec projects that engineering has helped this past year, as well as the $250,000 of engineering permits for right-of-way work, that's where the engineering staff capacity has gone this last year and a half. Absolutely, anytime that we have a large capital improvement project, and we hire a consultant, consultants are more expensive than what you're paying an in-house engineer to do. And so for this past year, we haven't had the staff capacity to do that, so we've had to hire consultants to get work done that we got done. Obviously, there is a plethora of work, especially in streets, that we would like to do, but we just didn't have the capacity. Hiring a consultant to do that would absolutely be a way to move that forward, and we have in some small areas, but then typically, the consultant costs come directly out of the project funding for that, whether that be bond funds or directly through road use tax and not the general fund.
Heather, I think where I'm going with this is, I think the biggest confusion the taxpayers have is the road use tax, you know? I think we need to look at that in the future very hard, at keeping that out of the general fund, you know, because it needs to go to the, the streets. So that's, I think that's a project we're all going to have to tackle in the next couple of years, at very, at the very least, so. Thank you, Your Honor. Anything else up here? I don't know when you sleep.
So I'd like to turn this discussion on general funds over to Alicia.
Okay, the next fund to look at is the garbage fund. The primary cost driver in this fund is the 28 agreement, 28E agreement we have with the solid waste commission for the maintenance and resident use of our landfill. The Marsh Town Water Works currently collects a landfill fee on all of the water bills that the city then uses to pay for that 2080 agreement. So the fee is currently 70 cents per month for residential properties and 605 per month for non-residential properties. And then any remaining revenue in this fund is used to offset the nuisance abatement budget for cleanups and then the dangerous building and dilapidated fund. The city currently pays the water works 5 cents per bill to collect that fee, and staff recommends just maintaining the current levels unless some new initiatives are implemented as part of the solid waste studies we could look at using this fund.
Questions or comments about that one? All the comment?
Chris Jones, Chief of Police, and I have the honor of closing out our FY '27 budget discussions, I appreciate it. We're going to start with our Fund 1099, which is our joint building, police and fire fund for our building. A majority of the cost expenses that are related to this budget item are related to utilities. Insurance, electricity, phone and communications, natural gas are a large portion of, of that amount that we budget for. As, as put forth in the memo, oftentimes, we oversee many of the expenses that are a little bit higher at the end of the year, and some of those utility expenses than they've been that we've budgeted, we're working really hard at finding that middle ground to, to allow you a good understanding of what it costs for us to maintain our building. It's currently six years old, we do a good job internally and through the city at maintaining where we can, we do contract services occasionally within the city of Marshalltown for services that we can't provide. Some of the efficiencies and eliminations, it's difficult to tell, most of the technology that we have within the building does run 24/7, we do have automatic lights, automatic doors, our heat and air control is regulated minutely through the city, so there isn't a lot of fluctuation and waste there. Far, what we end up discussing for fee for service opportunities, we currently rent out to the Marshall County Communications Commission, a portion of our second floor in our building for E911 services, which is a policy discussion between the county board of supervisors and the commission, which I would entertain, and through the memo, I listed out their rental agreement, which includes their portion of utilities and internet service. Any questions? Okay, moving on to our contracts, the animal rescue league for animal control services, we have had a contract from 2023 that extends into 2027. This coming up year, the cost for those services are $89,989, which helps our department maintain mostly dog control, animal control. They help us capture animals, they do bite containments for us, they help us investigate ongoing incidents of animal neglect and such. Those services increase 4% per year, and then that contract will be up in, at the conclusion of the 2027 fiscal year. For the efficiencies and eliminations, along with fees for services, there's a committee that's currently set. Captain Kyle Stevenson's working very hard at adjusting and looking at our ordinance and opportunities for our ordinance, and then taking a look at what some of those options are for council approval in the near future. Any questions? Well, thank you.
Wrap on our discussion?
That is a wrap on budget discussion, now we have closed session.
At this time, I, I would invite people to, thank you for being here, but it's time to clear the room so we can have a closed session, and we do that pursuant to I O Code Section 21.5, to discuss the purchase or sale of real estate where premature disclosure could reasonably be expected to increase the price, and we have an attorney-client relationship with Lynch Dallas, and the council may, by, council may be, there may be by council action, by a motion following the closed section, if the city's attorney approves.
We weren't ever mentioned.
Yeah, well, I thought I was gonna have to slip out, but I'm okay for the time being.